Air Proton Big Stick.
Present.
Mayor Beer.
Here. I will now read the land acknowledgement. The City of Pacifica acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral homeland of the Rama Tushaloni people, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. We honor the Rama Tushaloni peoples for their enduring commitment to Mother Earth. As indigenous protectors of this land and in accordance with their traditions, the Rama Tushaloni have never ceded, lost, nor forgotten their responsibilities as caretakers of this place, as well as for all peoples who reside in their traditional territory. We affirm their sovereign rights as first peoples and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Rama Tushaloni peoples. We will now salute the flag led by Councilmember Beckmeyer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we start our special presentation, we just have a couple of little things that we'd like to share with you. We have a new employee. So Kevin, would you like to introduce our new employee?
Thank you, Mayor Beer and Council Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I wanted to move a couple of my staff communications up to the front of the agenda here for a couple of special acknowledgements. First, I wanted to introduce, before we launch into our first return to in-person meeting, Emily Law, who is our new deputy city clerk, a new position to the city. And Emily is here with us, and City Clerk Sarah Coffey is going to read us a little bit of information.
All right. So our deputy city clerk, Emily Law, started with the City of Pacifica on October 14th. And she comes to us, was recently helping work for the San Diego County Registration and Elections Division. So she has experience with working in her city, in supervisory roles, focusing on production of the voter information pamphlets, and the secure handling of warehouse operations for the Elections Division. Emily holds an Eagle Shewery from the University of Montmore, Irvine, where she also attended conferences and published research pieces. In her free time, she loves trying local restaurants, watching major documentaries, reading and writing fiction. So we're very happy to welcome Emily as our deputy city clerk. Emily will be monitoring our call-in public comments.
Yay, welcome Emily. We're so happy to have you. You're gonna love it here. You're gonna love it. And so we also want to talk a little bit about our space. And look how beautiful and clean and bright our space is. I don't know about you, but it feels so good to walk into this space and be proud of Pacifica, right? We're here to make decisions for Pacifica, so we need to be proud of the space that we're in. And it is just beautiful. So I'm gonna let City Manager Woodhouse talk a little bit about the awesome people who made this happen.
Thank you. Yeah, we do want to carve out a minute here to recognize all the work that went into really financially prudently remodeling this space to, to want lighting and conducive to the public.
Yes.
Say a bit about the work first. Obviously, new carpeting, new painting, there's new electrical, there's new plumbing, furnishings, IT improvements, technology improvements. And a lot of attention to detail went into just this minimal remodeling. And a couple of things that are not complete yet. We will have new windows forthcoming when supply chain allows them to show up. And we will have framed pictures from Stephen Johnson Photography, that the mayor and Councilmember Beckmeyer worked on selecting, and Cindy Abbott helped also in the design and location of those. And we also will have a projector screen instead of projecting on the wall, but there's a great amount of supply as well, although the wall looks pretty good. But, so a lot of those details went into this room. So I want to, I want to acknowledge a bunch of employees that really worked on this. And as I, for those that are here, and I think most are, if you could come up front, we'd really appreciate that. First, Parks and Facilities Superintendent Geno Asarato. Hang up here for a minute, or over there, whatever. We're gonna take a picture, I hope. And as Geno told me earlier, it's Asarato, right? You know, the Italian pronouncing. And then Maintenance Worker One, Sean Barrango. Sean? Thanks, Sean. Building Maintenance Specialist Rolando Salazar. And of course, we also have Public Works Director Lisa Peterson and Paul Laverini. On the IT side of the house, we have Ken Fong, IT Analyst. Is Ken, is Ken here? Not here. Jason Bustria, IT Analyst. I think I saw Jason. And Wayland Lee as well. I don't, I'm not sure Wayland is here, but was part of the team. And of course, Tommy Yu, our IST Manager. And I don't believe Tommy's here. I'd also like to acknowledge PCT. And from PCT, I don't know that they can come up because they're actively doing stuff, but Jason Francisco and Jordan Globerson also were critical. Their half of making this work and our broadcasting, their broadcasting effort. And of course, Martin Anaya from PCT was critical. That was really the whole team of consultants that worked on audio and electrical and such. And so it was a really good effort and happy to bring it to fruition for this meeting. And that's it. If we can take a picture with the council. Hold on, guys, I think we want to take a picture.
Picture?
Take a photo?
Picture.
Isn't it wonderful to start our meeting with appreciation? I think maybe we should do that all the time. I do too. Yeah, we do. That's right. All right, so now we will lead into our first special presentation, which is a proclamation for Arbor Day. I know Paul Toda is here. So Paul, you can come on up, and I will read the proclamation, and we'll go from there. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in recognition and observation of Arbor Day and Tree City USA qualification event, November 12th, 2022. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and a holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed at various times throughout the nation and the world, and dedicated to the planting of trees in our community in order to support our environment and bolster our quality of life. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, and create jobs. And trees and their surrounding soil can sequester carbon for thousands of years, thus helping to mitigate the effects of climate change and contributing to the city's Climate Action Plan. And whereas, trees can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas by increasing retail spending, and beautify our community. And whereas, trees are a renewable source of giving us paper products and wood for homes and businesses, and wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas, the city takes pride in being environmentally sustainable in numerous practices and processes, and in encouraging residents to do the same. Now, therefore I, Mayor Beer, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim the second Saturday in November as Arbor Day in the City of Pacifica, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations, done this 24th day of October, 2022. Mr. Toda, hello.
Hello. Thank you. Mayor Beer, members of the City Council and city staff, thank you today for issuing the Arbor Day proclamation. And considering a resolution later tonight on the consent calendar, we'll commit the city to holding an Arbor Day event and ensuring that we always are a Tree City USA. This speaks to a wonderful collaboration between city government and Tree City Pacifica as we approach the fourth annual Arbor Day tree planting, this time at Oceana High School. We'll be celebrating it November 12th, starting at 10:00 a.m. in the school's Little Theater. The program will include you, Mayor Beer, announcing the winners of the tree art contest, and a student video about how to plant a tree. Also, Pacifica's poet laureate will read a special work for the occasion. Anyone interested in planting one of the 20 trees that day, please contact us at treecitypacifica@gmail.com. In a time when we read about how our country is divided, it's heartening to see how we are united around us, planting trees that will make our city even more clean, help us battle climate change, enrich our biotic community, and beautify this place we are fortunate to call home. This year, we have seen the city commit itself even more to this common cause through the adoption of a revised heritage tree ordinance. And we look forward to continuing our collaboration as the city looks at ways to grow our urban forest and adopt a canopy goal as part of a larger Climate Action Plan. Thank you for all you have done and all you will do as we continue to find ways to reach upward and branch outward, along with our trees, to enhance, improve, and grow our great city. Thank you.
Well said. That was beautiful. Counsel, do we have any comments? We'll just start with Sue. It's okay, you can just go.
There you go.
Nope, that's my light. No, that's Mike's. It doesn't matter, just go.
Thank you so much, Paul, and Tree City Pacifica. I see Gail is here and all the members for all that you've done to bring this issue to our full attention and to get us to buy in and to make us a Tree City USA, right here in Pacifica. And it's going to continue, and it is a movement. There's no stopping it, and that's really thrilling for me. So very exciting, looking forward to the 12th of November. Thank you.
We'll just go down the line.
I'll just say thank you. I know they've been working on this for quite a while, and we're making it official. So thank you to Tree City for all the efforts you've done.
And I just want to say I am so excited because I get to see those trees every week when I go to Oceana to work. And I saw the stakes in the ground, and it's perfect placement. It's gonna be really great. The students are gonna have shade where there wasn't shade. It's just great. So thank you so much.
It occurs to me that within a two-foot radius, I'm surrounded by no fewer than three little screens. And as I look around the room, screen, 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 et cetera. So having this moment to remember that real life happens more in terms of the trunk of a tree than one of these electric bearing units constantly surrounding me is really helpful for me to reconnect with reality as near as I can understand it. So thank you, Tree City, and I am looking forward to Arbor Day.
And I know I've said it a million times, I'm kind of a tree nut. I have way too many trees, but I like them. So I appreciate this very much, and thank you so much. We need to go see our council tree that we planted last year and see how it's doing up in the Fairmont Park. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And just really quick, I want to remind you to put a parking pass in your car. In case you haven't done that yet, you can get them downstairs in the lobby. I forgot to say that right at the very beginning, so we don't want parking tickets. Okay, we have another proclamation. It's for Pacificans Care 40th Anniversary. 40th Anniversary. Bruce Bango will be here to present and accept the proclamation on behalf of Pacificans Care. Hi, Bruce. Proclamation of the City of Pacifica in celebration of Pacificans Care 40th Anniversary. Whereas in 1982, a group of dedicated Pacificans, recognizing the importance and value of human services in the community, accepted the challenge to assist and support essential locally administered social service agencies to build a higher quality of life for Pacificans. And whereas, Pacificans Care, a nonprofit organization with an active, all-volunteer Board of Directors comprised of community members, became dedicated to making a difference. And whereas, Pacificans Care, Pacifica's Community Foundation, was established to supplement support to Pacifica Childcare and Senior Services, the Pacifica Resource Center, and Pacifica Youth Service Bureau, now affiliated with the YMCA. And whereas, Pacificans Care has provided over 1.2 million to Meals on Wheels, senior transportation, childcare learning experiences, critical youth counseling, rental assistance, emergency food services, and veterinary care for pets of seniors and the unhoused under the Rockaway Ricky Memorial Fund. And whereas, Pacificans Care established a community grants program for new community projects, supporting the seniors and PBNR homework centers, the Boys and Girls Club, Sanchez Art Center, senior art classes, youth leadership training, and the Spindrift School of Performing Arts. And whereas, Pacificans Care established an emergency fund for Pacificans during and after a major emergency, and responded to the COVID-19 pandemic with emergency groceries, rental and housing assistance for Pacificans families in need, daily grab-and-go lunches for seniors, virtual enrichment programs for childcare attendees, and much-needed counseling services for at-risk youth and families in crisis. And whereas, Pacificans Care honors businesses as well as individual and community organizations with their annual People Who Care Awards and Lifetime Achievement Awards. Now, therefore I, Mayor Beer, on behalf of the City Council of the City of Pacifica and all its citizens, do hereby proclaim November 5th, 2022 shall be Pacificans Care Day in honor of Pacificans Care 40th Anniversary, done this 24th day of October. Good evening.
Yes, yes. Mayor Beer, City Council, city staff, thank you for this honor on behalf of the entire board. We just so happened tonight we have a Zoom call to deal with some issues. And so I extracted myself to become down here. There'd normally be more of us here. We, Pacificans Care, have come a long way in the 40 years that we've talked about here. Our first two years, we didn't give out any money at all. We didn't have any money. And we were standing in front of Safeway selling little shits of paper that were shares of care for $2. So after two years, we were able to start our grant process with $2,000 to the seniors center. So we have then grown in the subsequent 38 years to last year giving out $85,000 to our four core agencies. We do this every year. We start all over again, and the 1.2 million that you mentioned is the total amount we've given out so far. So what I'd like to do is thank everybody for acknowledging Pacificans Care and tell you we're always happy to accept donations at pacificanscare.org, and also to invite everybody to our 40th anniversary meeting, which is going to be, I think, in the community center on November 5th. From 3:00 to 5:00, we'll have cupcakes, little its-its, and just a good time and thank people for everything that they've done for Pacificans Care. So again, on behalf of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. Counsel? She's like, comment? Go ahead. Oh, sure. Sue, I'll start with you this time.
I just barely help out at Pacificans Care, and I really miss the roaring 20s night. So hopefully that'll be back. And I appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
My goodness, what does Pacificans Care not do? I recall fondly my time on the board of PRC and was always grateful for the assistance that Pacificans Care gave to the PRC directly, and that was always my most visceral appreciation. And after that, it really is remarkable, everything that the organization does. And I'm with Sue. I look forward to going back to having a good time with you all in order to raise money for all the good causes in town.
Yeah, I cannot thank you enough for everything you do. And I've been watching your energy and your momentum in this past year. It seems like you've been out there doing so much. And so thank you very much.
Basically ditto. You can't say much more than thank you for the human service help you do give Pacificans and the different agencies that implement that. So thank you.
I'll just add how much I appreciate the and how much the organization and the city benefit from the knowledge and the wisdom of the people on the board. And the years that you've invested and grown and know our community, know the needs, are able to respond so quickly when a need arises. During the pandemic, it was just phenomenal to see the rallying together, bringing together, getting gift cards for food and everything that people needed right away. And so wonderful organization, and we thank you.
So I'm gonna be getting used to this in-person thing again, but I probably should have reminded people before the proclamations, if you want to give a public comment, that you can call in and do so. So I would like to give a chance for that if we want to open up public comment for either one of our proclamations tonight. And Sarah, can you help me with the instructions for that? And if you'd like to give a comment, then you could fill out a card and bring it up to us, and we'd love to hear from you. Again, I'm practicing for all the next.
So we're displaying the call-in number, which is 650-898-6965. When you dial in, you'll be prompted for a conference ID. That conference ID is in the agenda and also displayed on the screen right now. Once you call in, press star five to raise your hand. And Deputy City Clerk Law will see that your hand is raised all upon call-in commenters by the last four digits of your phone number. When you enter the call queue, please mute any TV or live stream that you're watching and listen through your phone to avoid any delays in audio. Phone, listen for the deputy city clerk to call on the last four digits of your phone number. And then that will prompt you to star six to unmute. Comment after stating your name.
We don't have any cards, but I did think we'd give it just a minute to see if anybody wanted to call in, and then we'll move on to the consent calendar. So thank you, Sarah. I'm sure we're gonna be saying this a lot as we go forward. So we will remind people again, if you'd like to comment on the proclamations, you can call in.
Numbers, but their hands are not raised.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Go ahead and close public comment. We'll move on to the consent calendar. And again, if you would like to comment on the consent calendar and you're on the phone, please call in now and get into the queue and press star five to raise your hand. Okay, consent calendar.
Mayor Beer, before the council considers the consent calendar, I have two changes that I would like to announce. One is to like to be remain item number seven off of the. The other is that on item three, the resolution in recognition of Arbor Day, there are three all administrative edits I'd like to bring your attention to. First is in the third, whereas. Says the city has maintained membership in Tree City USA. Later in that same whereas, hypo where it says $2 per capital, it should be per capita. And another correction, factual correction, is the following. Whereas says. Profit group, that should be changed. Those are the three administrative changes I'd like to suggest.
Thank you so much. Okay, Counsel? Would anybody like to pull anything from the consent calendar?
Nope.
Okay, seeing nothing, we will open up public comment. I do have one card. Mr. Toda, did you want to speak again on the proclamation? Or, no, you're good? Okay. And is there anybody on the phones that would like to speak on the consent agenda? Okay, thank you so much. Can bring it back to Counsel.
Okay. I move that we approve the consent account. A consent agenda as amended for item number three and dropping number seven.
Second.
Okay, we're gonna vote now. Aw, there we go.
I voted twice.
He voted twice?
I did.
I did that last one.
Okay.
Consent calendar with item number three as amended and item removed. Item number seven removed, passes unique.
Thank you very much. We will get used to this, I promise.
Sarah, can I just, can you clear it and let me press? Because I have two that I could use, and I want to see.
That was mine.
Oh, that one's yours.
That was mine.
Okay.
To the right.
There it is. Thank you, Sarah.
To the right.
Well, I'm smack in the middle of both buttons.
All right, it's oral communications time. Again, please call in now to get into the queue. If you'd like to make a public comment this evening, you could dial 650-898-6965. The conference ID is 383-609-442. You press star five to raise your hand. And please mute any background sounds and listen through your phone so that there will not be large delays. listen through your phone so that there will not be large delays. I have one card for public comment. Cindy Abbott. Come on up, Cindy.
Get used to this again. Good evening, mayor, council members, staff and community. I'm Cindy Abbott and tonight I'm wearing one of my favorite hats. And that is as the president of Pacifica's Environmental Family. For over 30 years, the Environmental Family has been providing educational opportunities, beginning with Earth Day programs in the schools back in the 1980s to our current environmental concerns focusing on the climate crisis. In support of the transition to clean driving vehicles, PEF, in partnership with the City of Pacifica, Peninsula Clean Energy and the Pacifica Climate Committee, will be hosting the first annual Pacifica Coastside Electric Vehicle Expo this Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Members of the public of all ages, income levels and backgrounds are invited to attend this free outdoor event being held in the front parking lot at the Pacifica Community Center at the corner of Highway 1 and Crespe. Come take a look at several different models of electric vehicles, new and slightly older, on display by their enthusiastic owners, who will be glad to answer any questions you have about owning and driving an EV. While there, you can visit information booths about charging at home or during short to long road trips, learn about various incentives for EV purchases, and programs to assist low to moderate income households purchase a used EV or even a new one. And if you come in costume, you'll also be able to trunk or treat at each vehicle in the tables while supplies last. We'd also like to thank Actara, Cool the Earth, and the Golden Gate EV Association for their information sharing and helping us plan the event. Look forward to seeing you on the 29th from 10:00 to 1:00 at the community center.
Be there. Thank you, Cindy. Next, we have Christine Bowles. And just a reminder for those who are dialing in, this portion of the agenda is available for the public to address any issue that is not on the agenda. Hello, Christine.
Good evening, council and staff. This is Christine Bowles. I just want to say how nice the space is. It really is bright and cheerful and much more pleasant to come in. I appreciate having the screen that's not blurry because I was always squinting before trying to read what you were projecting. One little suggestion. I'm having trouble, and I'm not sitting too far back actually hearing you all. And I, like Mike, I could hear, but Mary, I'm having trouble hearing you. And so some of it is your own voices. I don't know if it can be turned up. Mr. Woodhouse, I could hear until he turned. I think the acoustics are, or the.
Great. Thank you so much. I was wondering that, actually.
Mayor Beer, IT has identified that if we could tonight be very deliberate in speaking very closely into the mic, because apparently we've received message that the broadcast through PC is also a little bit low. So I think there's probably, as is not expected, some refinement to do on the audio and on the technology side, but, but let's all try to be cognizant and speak very directly into the mic. It's good enough right now.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any callers on the line?
We have three callers on the line and one hand is raised. This is for caller with the last four digits 0792. We will unmute 0792.
Evening, council. This is Jeremy Stafford, Pacifica Firefighters Union. Just wanted to call and say hi. Council chambers look great. Good job with the remodel. Good job, Rolando, if you're still there. And just kind of give you a heads up, of the 11,000 door hangers we've got printout in support of Measure Y, we've got roughly 8,000 of them out. And we're doing our part out there. Your firefighters are out there trying to help out the city and move forward. And again, I appreciate the relationships I've made with all the council members. And keep up the good work. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Off for call-ins.
Okay, we will close public comment. And move on to council communications. Who would like to begin? Now you can turn your light on. You can try that. Mike O'Neil.
Mine was pretty, mine will be pretty simple because I was out of town at conferences all last week. I'd like to report that the high school employee housing has received their grant for the van pools. And there are two captains now that are, will be driving vans down to Terranova. And the other one, I believe, is Jefferson, so that they will start, cut down on traffic. Each van can hold up to 10, 10 people. And it was a grant from the MTC that we were able to facilitate. So that's just good. And out of the 122 units, about 117 are now occupied. And there's a couple people waiting for their lease to end or whatever. Okay. But they're looking to have it fully filled very shortly, which is good news. And that was something that the, the high school district does thank the taxpayers of Pacifica, Daly City, and Brisbane, and Colma for passing the bond that got it all started. I have another unusual thing. On November 8th, I got a call from the San Mateo County Convention and Visitors Bureau. I believe they changed their name to something else now. Is it 650 or something like that? Okay.
The Peninsula.
The Peninsula, the Peninsula. And I had facilitated and a tour of meeting sites in Pacifica and drove a contingent of their staff around last year sometime. And so because of that outreach, they are bringing a group of meeting planners to Pacifica to look at places that we can have and host conferences. What I find unusual is that I will be giving the presentation at the Taco Bell on the beach. I just think, I just think that that's kind of funny. Taco Bell Conference. And then last, I would like to remind everybody that before the next council meeting, there will be a vote and urge everybody either to mail in or drop their ballots in either a mailbox or ballot collection box before November, what is it, 8, before November 8th. So just urge everybody to vote. It's an important election and you should have your say in it. That's me. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Vodilas.
I was out of town too. But I went different than Mike. I went to an electrification meeting again. And we heard from a gas company. So that was an interesting topic at an electrification meeting, to hear from the gas company. Also, Smart Coast, California, which is a group across the state of California which monitors LCPs and, and all of the differences that are happening on the coast to all of the cities on the coast. I went to the Democrats meeting where Anna Eschew was supposed to have a debate, but the opposition did not show up. So he called the day before and said he did not want a debate. So there was only, Anna was the only person there. Then I went to a party for candidates. We did council interviews for commissions and committees. There were a lot of events this weekend. I went to Brews and Blues. I went to trunk or treat, and the haunted house, and escape room, and the carnival. So a lot of fun events. They all went for different causes. And it was, it was enjoyable to do fun things too. So.
Thank you. Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Mayor Beer, I didn't have too many meetings this time. I was able to attend the Democrats' meeting as well, which I found very, very interesting and beneficial to hear more from Congresswoman Eschew. On the 13th of October, I attended the CKEG meeting as the alternate for Councilmember Vodilas because she was out of town, and heard some, two really interesting things that I'm looking forward to hearing more about. One of which is the equity study that's going on in the county. And the intent is to look at every project that CKEG, City and County Association of Governments, is involved with through an equity lens. And looking at what does that mean? What does, what, in what arenas? How do we define that? In what ways? And so this whole project is going on right now. And we'll be hearing more as it becomes more refined. And I don't know if we'll ultimately have a presentation or a report back to each of the councils, but that will be really interesting to hear. There was a present, there seems to be every month, a presentation on the express lanes on Highway 101. And the, the new feature on that issue is that there is going to be a JPA board. There are going to be two seats that are going to be available. And the interest, any interest, letters of interest that someone has should go to Sean Carpentere by November 2nd. There are two folks who are going to be stepping off. So Mary Ann Moise Derwin from Portola Valley.
Yes.
And Diane Pappin. And so those two seats are going to be available. And they'll be, they're looking for electeds to put in applications for that. There was also a really enlightening presentation on the Shared Micro Mobility Plan draft. And I got very excited to hear all about this, knowing that while Pacifica isn't in a position to be part of their initial launch, we are well positioned to be part of Phase Two. For the simple reason that Phase One cities, they're looking, they're already thinking ahead to Phase Two. And this is for e-bikes, electric scooters, and manual bikes. And it would be 500 vehicles per program service area. And they're looking to start it in two program service areas, the North County, which is Daly City, and Brisbane, I think.
South City.
Colma. South City's not part of the first one. Yeah, I was surprised too. And, and then the other one is in Redwood City and Fair Oaks area. So when looking to Phase Two, one of the things they're talking about is having cities that are adjacent to the ones that are in the pilot be eligible to participate.
And I'm thinking.
Oh, well, Pacifica's adjacent to Daly City. So yay. The timeline is a spring start to the program. So this is very preliminary. At this point, it was a draft plan they were putting forward. They'll be spending a whole year implementing and then have it ready to launch in spring 2024. There'll be a plan coming out and we'll have opportunities to comment on the draft plan. And that will be coming out next month. And I think that was really all that I had to report.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As usual, I begin with remembering that there is a horrible war going on in Ukraine and my heart continues to be with them, which makes the envelope in my hand that I'll get to deposit downstairs after the meeting into the voting box all the more important. So we have an election coming up on November 8th. There is a voting box right here at 2112 Beach Boulevard. There's another one at 540 Crespe. Or you can just go to any mailbox and stick the envelope in after you've cast your vote. If you don't want to wait till November 8th to cast your vote, please do so. It's the most important foundational duty we can do as citizens. I attended the Boys and Girls Club parent meeting on the 11th. One of the board members works for DPR Construction and they've arranged for a day of service for Boys and Girls Club along with a great deal of repair work for the Yosemite House. It was really good to see some of the work that's underway. Lots of grants, grant funding has come in, including from the county, from the Jan Zuckerberg Initiative, and I mentioned DPR. And a way the community can help, if you go to smile.amazon.com. I don't know how many people are aware of the Amazon Smile Program, but they've arranged it so that a portion of what you pay for your Amazon goods will go to your charity of choice. And there's no reason not to choose the Boys and Girls Club for that charity. It'll go straight to our clubhouse. I too enjoyed the Democrats' meeting in which Anna spoke, Anna Eschew. And I also enjoyed the meet and greet that was held for Anna Eschew and Mark Berman afterward. On the 19th, there was a Peninsula Cal Cities Lunch in which we got to enjoy some updates from Peninsula Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, which is the PCE equivalent in Santa Clara County. And we heard from the Sustainability Coordinator from the City of San Mateo, speaking about their approach to existing reach codes. And we had a robust discussion a couple weeks back. Looking forward to the discussion we'll be having at goal setting, it was heartening to hear San Mateo's experience, especially when it came to existing building codes. So things like instead of writing it as a burnout code, we can write it as a, when it's a major renovation or remodel, to make it a lot easier to accomplish our goal and make it easier on whomever is trying to do the work. I attended the Emergency Preparedness Meeting that night. They spoke about the Wood Chipper Program, the Loma Prieta Anniversary. And November 5th will be World Tsunami Awareness Day, which brought up the topic of Zone Haven and SMC alerts. Zone Haven now does have a component where they'll warn you if you're in the tsunami inundation zone. So if you're unaware of Zone Haven, you just go to zonehaven.com. It's very simple to see where your zone is so that you know where to look when you need that information. They also debriefed a bit about Fog Fest. And again, they spoke about how little people seem to be aware of Zone Haven. So again, I'm just urging everyone, go to zonehaven.com. And those SMC alerts really come in handy. After that, we have a Peninsula Clean Energy meeting coming up on Thursday. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, I attended a virtual meeting of FIX in San Mateo County, which is a local grassroots organization working to enact citizens oversight of San Mateo County Sheriff. Congresswoman Spear spoke there. I take every chance I get to hear from our Congresswoman. Really important and group. Please check them out. Unfortunately, our Economic Development Committee meeting and our OSIPAC meeting both canceled because of lack of quorum. So I'm hoping with our new committee and commissioners, who will be talking about later tonight, that that's not going to happen anymore so we can continue to have meetings. I attended the YIMBY Prom, which is the Yes in My Backyard, which is housing leadership fundraiser. I attended that with our Jefferson Union High School District trustee, Andy Lee. And that was really great to see all of the housing folks come together and make some money to try to, you know, advocate for housing across the county. I also attended the Pacifica Dems meeting. I did outreach with our North County Outreach Collaborative and Coast Pride at the Half Moon Bay Pumpkin Fest. It was really nice to see folks out at the Pumpkin Fest. I attended the committee and commission interviews. I attended the Rotary Breakfast Meeting because a student of mine was presenting. So that was really exciting. He actually got to go to the Rotary Youth Leadership Program. So that was really nice. Yeah. And then I attended the planning meeting for the Working to End Homelessness Summit. So I don't know if y'all are aware, but there have been, there were three virtual meetings and virtual workshops that have been put on across, over the past year. Look, I'm all getting distracted. I'm getting distracted by you guys. It's okay. Okay, because this is actually important. So the Working to End Homelessness Summit is, is happening next Friday. It's in person. It's going to be held at the Westin San Francisco Airport. And it's an accumulation of the three workshops that have been held previously. One was talking about the issues, the issues of homelessness in our region. The second The second one was talking about interim housing, and the third one was talking about the transition into permanent housing. And this accumulation of all of that is so that we can get ideas moving forward from, directly from our community. So there's going to be tabletop conversations, and I'm going to be one of the moderators of the event, so I'm really looking forward to that. I went to Blues and Brews, so thank you Economic Development Committee for like, working so hard and getting that event out. Yulia, I see you back there. Thank you for everything. And I don't know if Alyssa's here, but it was a really fun event. Folks showed up, which was awesome. I went to Trunk or Treat as well. And I also attended the Terranova Football Game, so that was fun. And that's all for me tonight, and I'm going to hand it over to, oh, I'm sorry. Mike O'Neill.
I just found out about this grant program last week when I went to my conference, and the deadline is November 29th. But virtually, the entire Lindemar neighborhood is eligible for a grant for this. And that is, it's called EarthquakeBraceBolt.com. And it's, if you register for this, you have to have a wood-framed floor at the lowest level with a crawl space underneath your house, and they're providing grants of up to $3,000 to provide earthquake bracing. So if you were in a Lindemar Rancher, or any other house, it's a wood-framed floor at the lowest level with a crawl space under your house, you should go to the website, Earthquake Brays, excuse me, EarthquakeBraceBolt.com, and register and see if you will do it, because the Pacifica zip code is eligible. So I just, sorry, I forgot to do that earlier, and that's what I was asking Sue about, so, you know.
That's okay.
So anyhow, up to $3,000 to earthquake safe fee for your house.
Thank you so much. Okay, Councilmember Vodilas.
Just one more thing about voting. It's really important. It says I voted on the back of my phone. It's really nice now, they, I put mine in my mailbox, I got a notification that said that they had picked up my ballot, then I got another notification saying, your ballot has been counted. And that's really the best thing to know, that they actually counted my ballot. And, and you can get those notifications, and it's a great thing, so please vote.
City Manager Woodhouse, handing it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Beer. I have several announcements. I wanted to follow up on your brief comments about the Brews and Blues event. And on Saturday was the Economic Development Program and Economic Development Committee's Proof of Concept Event. Brews and, B bands, three breweries, local vendors, and I would say, as an initial event, it was a huge success. No exact numbers of participation, but estimates are there were more than 500 folks that went through. I think there were around 500 beers sold, and that means that not everyone had a beer, so some people had more than one beer, right? And if you do the math. And it was, I think, a great success. I was there for the first hour, and it got more crowded, I understand, later. And I particularly want to thank Sean Thompson and Robert Foster from the Economic Development Committee, because they were the subcommittee that worked very closely with Management Analysts, Ronte, and Mario Shureb from our Finance Department, and Yulia Carter, to really bring this together, along with the bike park, along with the local vendors to the...
Providing food and beverage.
So we hope to be able to do it again, and really, part of it was to really spark the interest in what Palmetto could be, and that area could be, and it's all of those things. On that, I wanted to just mention that this week, tomorrow night, we have our next phase of community workshops for the housing element. Over the weekend, we had about 60 people registered. Folks can also drop in, but we encourage registration. There will be food provided, 6:00 PM to 8:30 at Cabrillo School, and our night, Tuesday night, and then the second meeting later, which will be Sunset Ridge, 6:00 PM to 8:30 on Tuesday night, November 1st. So this is our second round of Housing Element Community Workshops. And finally, I wanted to just announce that we've completed compiling together the detailed citywide accomplishments annually for the previous fiscal year, and that is now posted on our City Council work plan. And it's an incredible, ten-page list of an amazing amount of accomplishments related to major projects, all the way down to data related to daily services that the city provides. Snapshot of really good, successful city organization.
Okay, very good. We don't have any public hearings tonight, but we're going to move on to our consideration item, Agenda Item Number Eight. So again, for the public, if you'd like to comment on Agenda Item Number Eight, if you could get into the queue now from home, so that you're ready to speak when we call on you. So Agenda Item Number Eight is a discussion of the 2022 California Building Code Triannual Update and Proposed Local Amendments, including building electrification requirements. Proposed action is to receive a presentation and provide direction to confirm local amendments to be included in an ordinance to be introduced on 11/14/2022. We have Christian Murdock with here, with us here tonight. Thank you for being here. We also have Consultant Rafael Reyes. And it says they're on the phone, but is, are they here? Okay. So good evening, Christian. How are you? Nice to see your face.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Honorable councilmembers, I am Planning Director Christian Murdock. I am also joined by Assistant Fire Marshal Craig Whitner from the North County Fire Authority, here to answer any questions that may come up relating to the existing local amendments to the California Fire Code. Tonight, we will talk about four aspects of the building code update process, which is underway in the city of Pacifica and in jurisdictions across the state of California. Include requirement to adopt the building code every three years, which is based off of the statewide model code. And cities can adopt local amendments, and all of these adoptions must be effective by January 1st of 2023, which was when the new three-year cycle for the building code begins. So there are some key dates with respect to Pacifica's building code update process. We've already had a study session on reach codes related to building electrification on September 27th. We have tonight's City Council meeting to consider various other local amendments besides reach codes. And then, based on tonight's feedback from the City Council, staff will prepare an ordinance for introduction by the City Council to adopt the statewide model code, and whichever local amendments are directed by the City Council. And then, the intent is for the City Council to be able to vote after a public hearing on September, or November 28th, rather, and consider adoption of the ordinance. So tonight, we will talk about four categories of local amendments. The first is continuation of local amendments from the 2019 code adoption. Second is geotechnical hazard assessment local amendments. Third is underground utility installation local amendments. And the fourth is reach codes for new buildings and modifications to those which were adopted in 2019. Respect to the first category, these local amendments are relatively generic in nature. They've been adopted for several California building code update cycles, and they address various components of the California Building Code, or CBC, including the building code itself, the residential code, electrical code, plumbing code, energy code, and fire code. Staff proposes to carry forward these local amendments with minor changes, for instance, to eliminate typos we've identified, and to reorder some of the sections to align with the structure of the 2022 codes. Second local amendment for discussion this evening is geotechnical hazard assessments. This local amendment stemmed from the city's general plan update process earlier this year, and would expand on existing California building code and California residential code soils report requirements, which focus primarily on onsite conditions and the design of the building foundation and other structural systems, but lack an obligation or requirement to look beyond the site itself to other potential off-site geotechnical hazards. So this local amendment would require designers of buildings to evaluate potential off-site geotechnical hazards, including up slope and/or down slope hazards, with the potential to cause direct injury to persons or property as a result of the project, and to design features based on any hazards identified to minimize those hazards. And it would be based on hazard assessment data that's available generally, such as aerial imagery, previously prepared geotechnical hazard assessments, and other publicly available data, and would not include an obligation to enter into adjacent properties. This local amendment would supplement existing requirements for discretionary projects in the general plan and in the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, and would support safety element policies in the 2040 general plan related to mitigating hazards. The third local amendment would be new as well, similar to the geotechnical hazard assessment requirement, and it would govern underground utility installation. It would require new structures to install all new utility lines underground, and upgraded utility lines would also need to be installed underground. It'd include exceptions to undergrounding, when that undergrounding would require trenching and repaving of any public right-of-way that has been paved within one-year building permit application. Undergrounding that would require more than 500 feet of trenching to reach a point of connection. Or instances where the servicing utility carrier has determined that undergrounding is impractical or impossible and to provide service if the utilities were installed underground. This local amendment would implement 2040 general plan policies to underground new utilities, and would close a gap that currently exists in the city's regulations for projects that would receive a building permit only, which are known as ministerial projects. Other projects subject to the discretionary review process, by condition of approval, are required to install new utilities underground. And then, the fourth category of local amendments for the council's consideration tonight would carry on from the previous study session on reach codes, directed to new buildings only. First subset of those are building electrification reach codes. The City Council previously directed several new building electrification reach codes or modifications to existing reach codes. Staff needs additional council clarification and direction on the restaurant exception and on non-residential electric vehicle or EV. The table on your screen lists the four existing exceptions to the 2019 reach code, all-electric building requirement. The study session on September 27th, the council, a majority of the council provided direction to staff to eliminate Exceptions 1, 2, and 3. However, there was not clear direction from a majority of City Council to eliminate Exception 4, related to for-profit restaurants open to the public, have some sort of identified business need for gas-fueled cooking appliance. Some council members wanted additional information, which has been provided in the staff report, and which we can discuss further if desired. And so accordingly, staff is seeking direction from City Council, whether to retain or to remove this exception for certain restaurants. This next table here addresses the second category of electric vehicle, or electrification reach codes, related to electric vehicle or EV parking standards. There are different categories depending on the type of building proposed. In the first row, you'll see EV parking requirements for single-family and two-family dwellings. The council indicated its direction to incorporate the model code provisions presented by Peninsula Clean Energy. Similarly, for multifamily dwellings, the council wanted to incorporate the model code provisions with the high-power option, and also to provide an affordable housing exception. However, the City Council majority did not provide complete guidance with respect to non-residential EV parking requirements, i.e. commercial and other non-residential parking requirements. Council did provide direction to incorporate the model code provisions with the change from EV-capable to EV-ready. However, staff's seeking direction whether to establish new categories that council identified at the study session for publicly-owned or operated parking lots and overnight accommodations such as hotels and motels. So you'll see on the slide here, public parking lots and overnight accommodations. Staff has provided a recommendation to adjust from the model code offices and all other And then, with respect to one other category of reach code, the City Council directed staff to evaluate the town of Portola Valley's gray water ordinance. Gray water being certain types of water used within a residential unit and discharged, but not including biological or other types of dangerous contamination. And gray water can be reused for various purposes, including irrigation, flushing of toilets, and so forth. So the City Council, we need, staff needs City Council's direction on whether to prepare a gray water reach code local amendment. So tonight, we have recapped here the four points that staff needs City Council direction on. We need direction with respect to the geotechnical hazards local amendment, underground utilities local amendment, confirmation and direction on certain points related to reach codes for building electrification and EV charging, and then also confirmation of direction whether to prepare a gray water reach code. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much, Christian. Appreciate that. Do we have any questions from council at the moment? Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I asked this question ahead of time and got the answer, but I want to make sure the answer is made public, because I had a concern on the first reach code about fireplaces and whether or not we'd still be allowing wood-burning fireplaces. Appreciating and adamantly suggesting we get rid of gas fireplaces, but wondering about wood-burning fireplaces, if you'd be so kind.
Of course, Mayor Protem. So this local amendment does not seek to address wood-burning fireplaces. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District, or BACMUD, which is a regional air quality jurisdiction, they actually already have regulations which prohibit the installation of wood-burning fireplaces in newly constructed residential buildings. And so while the council, you know, potentially could consider such a local amendment, it's unnecessary under the current law, because it's already prohibited in new residential buildings.
Thank you. The question, I'm not sure if I've received an answer to yet. I believe we spoke at the last meeting about the reach codes regarding prohibition on converting an all-electric building into a mixed-fuel building after the fact. Where are we on incorporating that prohibition into our new codes?
Sure. I think there are basically two flavors that that, that issue can take. One is what I recall discussing at the study session, which is a prohibition on the extension of gas infrastructure. So that's one option. The other option, I think, is part and parcel to the all-electric building requirement, so that there's not a loophole, which is to prohibit conversions back to mixed-fuel buildings. So that is something that would be part of the regulations and the ordinance brought back for introduction and potential adoption by the City Council.
So both of those already are going to be incorporated, as we currently understand it?
The second is, the first is not. So the first, I think, is a broader potential issue of policy, which council did not provide direction to explore, to my knowledge, at the last meeting. However, the second one prohibiting conversion back to mixed-fuel buildings, I think, is a simpler policy question, and one that can be added into the ordinance prepared by staff.
So you're saying that the first option is something that's more difficult to implement? Is that, first, if you could tell me one more time what that was, because I'm not a technician, so help me get it into my brain properly, and then explain to me whether or not it's something we can pursue further place?
Sure. I don't mean to say it's something that cannot be explored, we can. I think it's just the more complicated of the two options, and I think there are, potentially are a number of other unintended consequences that are more difficult to grapple with. If you recall, it was, we were somewhat wanting for a simple explanation at the study session of what exactly it meant. So, you know, if Mr. Reyes is there and wants to offer an example in a moment, that might be helpful. The prohibition on extending gas infrastructure, I think we provided examples where there may have been a previous building on the site that was demolished, and it may have a gas meter, not allowing that gas meter to have a connection, and plumbing extended to put gas into the new building. Also, not allowing new connections to extend existing gas appliances within an existing building, for example. But given that the council's direction was not to venture into existing building reach codes, that's one example of where that quickly becomes a more complicated policy question that may be better explored and considered as... that may be better explored and considered as part of a later process, in staff's opinion.
So maybe we bookmark that for the discussion we have during goal-setting about existing structures. It sounds like the recommendation?
That would be my recommendation, just given the variety of unknowns and the various different circumstances that that could affect.
Okay, thank you. Shifting gears, I have one question on two of the other elements. One was the nomenclature of no entry onto adjacent properties when, I think it's taking borings to validate the stability of them. So when I read that, I was like, oh, that sounds like a legal thing. But there wasn't a lot of data about why that's a legal thing. So again, I asked the question, got an answer to my satisfaction, but I thought it would be a good idea to elaborate a little bit on the legalities around that particular recommendation.
Absolutely. So the real key issue is that the city council by ordinance cannot authorize one private individual to enter the property of another private individual. So maybe in that simple example, it makes sense, but when thinking about a geotechnical hazard assessment, the city council cannot authorize or direct a geotechnical engineer for my project to go onto my neighbor's property to perform evaluations, soil borings, et cetera, without that neighboring property owner's authorization. And so to keep this within the realm of what the city council can mandate, our recommendation is to restrict the analysis to publicly-available information or observations that can be made from publicly-available spaces such as the right-of-way, public areas, public property, et cetera.
Thank you very much. So this final one is kind of a two-parter, I guess. These California building codes, before it comes back to us the next time, is there any thought of sending this to Planning Commission to look at? And I ask that because they, generally speaking, are a group of individuals with various skill sets that usually are a little bit more nuanced than some of those that we have. And so I was thinking it might not be the worst idea if they could look at these and finalize the recommendation, but perhaps you have an insight?
Sure. I think that is a possibility. It's not one that we've identified or recommended yet as particularly workable, given where we are in the timeline of required adoption, generally speaking. But for a few of the finer points of the electrification reach codes, overall, I think most of these are pretty customary and local amendments, from my perspective, particularly carry forward prior local amendments. So it may be a situation that the existing building reach codes, for example, are a helpful point in time to take them next year, to have the Planning Commission really churn through that information, think of all the unintended consequences or hypotheticals, and really refine that set of regulations if that's a project that the city council puts on its priority work plan.
For starters, the geotechnical stuff would be great to have their feedback, again, just to have that check box. But also the undergrounding of utilities, or the undergrounding of electric lines. It seems to me like I've heard many impassioned conversations on the Planning Commission regarding undergrounding. And part and parcel with that is a question I've asked, and I'll ask you again, about undergrounding poles along frontages, not necessarily in front of single-family homes on single lots, but certainly in terms of business buildings and and then the subdivisions. So it seems like if a subdivision is going in, it should be a simple matter of making sure our law says, well, we underground the poles in that instance, et cetera. This is something they do in other cities. So I was wondering if it might be a relatively simple matter to incorporate it here. And again, you know, we have the experts that sit on Planning Commission where I've heard far more nuanced conversations, whereas it takes me a moment to grapple with the term subdivision and pull that out of somewhere. So A, one reason why, on the other side, when we deliberate, I might make that recommendation. But B, can you tell us about the undergrounding of poles so that we can have that conversation on the other side?
Sure. I think there are various forms that the undergrounding can take. This particular local amendment, as conceived by staff to this point in time, addresses the installation of new connections to existing utility poles and ensuring that those new connections are installed underground, so as not to expand the above-ground utility network. That's different from undergrounding existing utility poles, which service a neighborhood, for example, or potentially more than one property. That process is much more complex and much more costly in most instances, and the level of coordination is also correspondingly much greater, given the need to coordinate with PGE for the undergrounding, potentially with multiple other property owners, et cetera. And so that would go beyond the scope of this particular undergrounding requirement proposed in this local amendment to a broader, I think, policy question. There are also relevant considerations then about the cost of the undergrounding and whether it's proportionate to the project being undertaken. For instance, if it were to apply to one single-family residence, the need to underground one or more utility poles might be disproportionate and present some concerns from a regulatory standpoint. And so that's a much more complex policy question to look beyond undergrounding the new connections to utilities and undergrounding existing utility poles.
I may have more comments on the other side. Thank you very much.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Christian, I, I think Margot had sent me an invite to some sort of webinar a while back about what a city can do and stuff. And one of the things they mentioned was rainwater. If we do gray water retention basin of some sort, whatever iteration that takes, could we not also make a requirement that the rainwater runoff from the roof go into that basin also?
I suppose it's possible. I think the issue is they're quite different issues in terms of the source and potential volumes, and so I think the policy requirement and the systems involved might be quite different, even though they seek similar issues of trapping, quote-unquote, wastewater, right, that might otherwise run off the site or go into the sewer and using some other intentional purpose. I would need to further study potential options that could be included in the building process. That's not something that I'm prepared to speak about in depth this evening.
Because I know, like, North Coast has rain barrels you can get and hook up to your spout, and I was just wondering, wouldn't it be possible to kind of do something underneath, you know, the thing and do it as part of every home remodel? So.
Right. I think there are different options, right? There's a continuum of, you know, simple to complicated, and so not knowing exactly what the council's intent is, you know, I would need to look carefully at what potential options are for that. You know, it could be as simple as mandating a rain barrel to, you know, full interception and intention of all stormwater runoff, which would be a much more complicated regulatory approach. And so if that's the desire of the council, it would help to get some guidance as to where on the spectrum, if you will, or on the continuum of regulation the interest would be.
Okay. And for like the new construction, is there, like, I've seen some really major, major remodels going on in town right now, okay? And do we have, and I know there's a rule, because even the school district kind of followed this when we remodeled the schools. In order to qualify as a remodel, you had to keep one wall up, so you kept Prop 13. It wasn't, that was for state bond money in regards to the school district. But is, do we need to put a trigger in here as to what is a remodel, you know, to electrify a home and convert a home so that, you know, like, ninety, eighty, fifty percent, thirty percent, whatever?
Yes. Councilmember O'Neill, what you're touching on is sort of the million-dollar question of building code application to existing buildings, whether it's the reach code context or it's undergrounding of utilities or sidewalk improvements. We have, as a staff, discussed this point. We think really a unified, comprehensive approach is appropriate. I think we'll be forced to grapple with that question as to what defines a remodel if the council undertakes an existing building reach code work item next year. That's probably the recommended opportunity because there is a lot of complexity and similar to the gas infrastructure extension, a number of potential unanticipated consequences. As the council discussed at the study session on September 27th, Councilmember Vatalas, you know, income issues and hardship questions, you know, with respect to, you know, lower-income existing property owners. And so there are a range of policy questions that are complex on, you know, simply words and numbers to define a particular threshold. And so it's something for a variety of reasons we want to put together, but it needs time and it needs careful thought and staff's opinion.
Okay, so that's more appropriate as a work plan thing than reach code inclusion?
In my opinion, it is, because it quickly verges into then triggering these for existing buildings, and that's something that I think the council felt was much more complex, potentially more controversial, and could sidetrack this critical process to get the new codes adopted by January 1st of 2023. It's something that needs proper time and thought to do it right, if that's what the council wants to undertake next year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Thank you for the presentation. I have a question on packet page 187. It is in the section on topics applicable to new buildings. It's near the bottom, exception for all-electric building requirement in terms of EV, no, sorry. I'm on the wrong page. Next page. Packet page 188. New reach codes to adopt with this, applicable to new buildings, having to do with EV parking. So it's in the second box. The last paragraph states, "To minimize costs associated with affordable housing development, the local amendment would give a developer the discretion to exclude any dwelling unit that is a deed-restricted affordable housing unit from EV parking requirements." So the reason I read that is I want to ask about the, what I mentioned in council communications about equity. And it's hard to know because this is an emerging area in terms of who has an electric vehicle and who doesn't. And if you have one, you need the charging, right? And so kind of paring a little into the crystal ball over the next three years, and there's that piece. And then there's setting us up for the future piece. So I wanted to understand better what the vision is of this in terms of requirements. If you can expand on that, or we can chat it after.
Sure. I'll offer some initial thoughts, and it's probably something that warrants some further discussion and consideration by the city council. I think what you have here is a tension between near-term and long-term considerations. My sense, Mayor Beer was the champion of this particular component of the provision, was to reduce the costs, in my understanding, for construction of new affordable housing. To construct such projects is already challenging, or leveling on additional local requirements, for instance, EV charging requirements. And so this, along with, you know, potential exceptions for parking lieu fees and other financial assistance, direct and indirect, all of them help make construction of affordable housing units feasible. That said, as we discussed at the study session, to come in after the fact and install electric vehicle infrastructure is considerably more expensive. And one can imagine a time in the next 10, 20, 30 years where the high cost of electric vehicles now moderates, they become more accessible to people with low and moderate incomes, and they may be at a disadvantage at that point in time, having to bear the cost of installing their own electric vehicle infrastructure. So that's a policy tension. There's no technical answer to help resolve that. I think if anything, should the council require EV charging infrastructure for affordable housing developments, at least it's a clear requirement, and affordable housing developers can try to adapt to it and to work through it. However, you know, there's a good policy reason to, you know, exclude affordable housing units from the requirement. In this instance, it's at the developer's option, so they could choose to include them or not. It gives them, you know, the convenience and the ability to take advantage of that cost reduction, if that's needed to make the project pencil out. And so that's really a question for the council as a policy consideration.
Thank you. Council.
To the chair, this is Rafael Reyes. If I may offer one point of information on this item.
Please, go right ahead.
Honorable mayor and council members, this is Rafael Reyes, Director of Energy Programs for Peninsula Clean Energy, and it is certainly the case that a number of cities have in the prior code cycle included exclusions for affordable housing, and that's understandable. Subsequent to those steps by prior cities, the City, the Peninsula Clean Energy has since and now continues to offer incentives to cover most or all of the cost of EV charging for 100% affordable housing developments, with the intention of ensuring that affordable housing developers have the support they need to deploy this kind of infrastructure.
Thank you so much for speaking up. I appreciate that. Councilmember Vatalas.
Are we discussing the gray water issue now too? Or was it just something?
Do you have a question?
I have a question.
Okay, questions.
I was talking to someone about gray water, and there are various types of gray water issues. You can take a hose and connect it to your laundry and let the gray water out. There are also, there are also plans where you have to filter everything, and then you need electrical. What are we actually talking about? Are we talking about additional plumbing pipes for gray water or just a simple gray water system?
So the direction from council was to evaluate the ordinance in effect in the town of Portola Valley. I'm far from an expert on gray water systems, but my opinion in looking at their ordinance was it was on the relatively complex and sophisticated side, not the simple connect the hose to the washing machine and you're good. It did require identification of future space outside of the home, as well as installation of electrical infrastructure for the future filtration systems. And so it would have the potential, if enacted in Pacifica in the manner enacted in Portola Valley, perhaps to be on the more intensive or costly options.
Thank you.
And again, we're talking about new development.
Correct. This would apply as a reach code to new development only.
Just clarifying that. Councilmember O'Neill.
The webinar I went to on, on the computer that was talking all about the reach codes and stuff, when they mentioned gray water, that was quite extensive, and I think the lot sizes in Woodside or Portola Valley are substantially bigger than our 5,000-square-foot lots and.
We don't want to deliver it yet.
Yeah. So, oh, it's just more information.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Anything else? Okay, let's open up public comment on the item, please. If you are on the phone, you could dial in now, please, at 650-898-6965. Conference ID is 383609442. You press star five to raise your hand, and please mute any background sound and listen through your phone to be called upon by the last four digits of your phone number. We do have two cards here. Margot, you're first. Come on up. Yes, Margot, I'm so sorry that you can't hear me.
Good evening, Mayor Beer and members of city council. It's wonderful to see you in person this evening in this new space. My name is Margot Maiman, and I've lived in Pacifica now for 17 years. I've been volunteering for a long time for the Pacific Beach Coalition, but more recently, I started working with a group called the Climate Reality Project. Initially, I started working with that group because they were addressing climate issues at the federal level, and I thought that that's where all the action was taking place in terms of climate. But I was wrong. In fact, climate change policy should and can happen at all levels of government, including small towns like ours, like Half Moon Bay, Portola Valley, et cetera. I got interested in reach codes when I found out that they are a specific mechanism to prevent greenhouse gas emissions at the mechanism to prevent greenhouse gas emissions at the local level. And in this case, of course, we're talking about methane gas. So thank you for updating the reach codes for new construction. The first very specific thing that I want to say about reach codes tonight is something that we've already talked about a little bit, but I just need to be super clear that there needs to be language that states that no existing all-electric building may be converted into a mixed-fuel building. So if you think about it, once new construction is done, after that new construction is completed, that building is now an existing building. So it's possible that that owner of the building could, the next month, a year later, go ahead and say, well, let me put in a gas kitchen in my existing building. And so if you think about it that way, these new reach codes, which are supposed to prevent the expansion of gas infrastructure, become a little bit pointless with that loophole. So it's very important that you put in language that says no existing all-electric building may be converted into a mixed-use building. I mentioned in a letter that I sent to council also about restaurants to go ahead and give them the option to make the case that their food can be prepared by a gas flame. But more and more chefs are discovering the advantage of induction cooking. There's all sorts of advantages of induction cooking. We want restaurants in Pacifica, so let them ask for the exception, but I would say don't make a blanket exception. I have more to say, but I don't have time. Thank you very much for your work on this and joining other city council in the Bay Area that are updating reach codes now in 2022. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And next up, we have Christine Bowles.
Again, council and staff, this is Christine Bowles. As an architect who focuses on green building, I just really want to thank you all for for taking this this up, for and looking at ways that we can fight climate change and build better as a city. I sent you a long letter today, and I'm not going to be able to to go over all these items, but just quickly on a few things, I appreciate the geotechnical investigations that are being considered, especially given our our history of debris flow landslides here. There's not very much, I I guess the ordinance isn't drafted yet, so I have a lot of questions, like how do we identify which properties need to go to this extra level of investigation? It's not all of them. Perhaps the Department of Conservation, geologic hazard maps is a good way. So hoping to hear more about the process and how this is going to get fleshed out. Terms of investigations on other properties, I'd like to suggest that sometimes adjacent neighbors would want to know. And so leaving the language open, that if the geotechnical engineer thinks it's a good idea, and the neighbor agrees that, you know, that's a good idea to do, especially if you think of, you know, a project is being built above you on a steep site, like I would want you to study, that I would want you to do borings on my site to make sure, you know, there's not going to be landslides that are going to affect my house. So some some owners might be willing. And also, you know, a lot of those properties, like above Oddstat, I believe are city property. And, you know, absent owner, you know, could pay for a boring on city property that hasn't been addressed. I also really want to suggest that this happens during the planning review process. This is key, and not during the building permit phase, because these these are, this is information that goes to informing the design of the project from the start. If you have a gully, that's a place where a landslide could more more realistically happen. You don't want to be building your house there. But if you're not doing that investigation until you've already gotten all of your development approvals, you know where your driveway's going, you know where your trees are going and so forth, that could completely change your project. So this is important information to have early, and I think the Planning Commission would agree with that. Suggest talking to them about underground utilities. Samantha Hauser is very passionate about those things. And I'd love to help with rainwater. That's a topic that I actually know a lot about. The gray water cannot be connected by a hose. It has to go underground. And gray water in California works much better than water storage. Water storage, just because we get so little rain for, you know, seven, eight months of the year.
Doesn't really pay.
Anyway, oh, three seconds left. Anyway, thank you. Enough time. Hope you read my letter. Thanks.
Thank you so much, Christine. Do we have anyone on the phone?
We have two people in the queue. First have a number ending in 4260, and then second, we have a number ending in 3097. So we will be unmuting 4260.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, fabulous. Okay. Well, good evening, councilmembers. This is Samantha Hauser, and I'm speaking tonight as an individual. I'm really excited to see the city updating our reach codes and promoting sustainability. And I really appreciate staff and council's time tonight in doing so. I did want to provide some input on the utility undergrounding recommendations reflected in the staff report, and specifically the three bullet points detailing the requirements on new structures. I found the bullet points to be just a little bit confusing, especially the second one, which reads that all utility lines between the structure and the point of connection to existing utility lines having the capacity to serve the structure must be placed underground. I think, you know, as someone that looks at a lot of these codes, it's kind of hard for me to trace what the ask is. I think it's really important to clarify that for larger projects, and specifically residential subdivisions, apartment buildings, and commercial projects, that any existing utility is on the project's frontage. And I'm going to underscore frontage, be undergrounded. That frontage clarification is extremely important, and it's consistent with what the city approved in the general plan. So, for example, in policy ES-I-1, it specifically says, through a combination of mixed-use land use designation, treat improvements such as underground overhead utility lines along project frontages will make, you know, a destination for pedestrians and shoppers. And then CD-I-20 is the big one. This says, continue to require underground utilities in all new development. New development should include undergrounding of existing overhead utilities along each project frontage. I want to point out that this is something that's normative in Bay Area cities, Daly City, Santa Rosa, Livermore, South San Francisco, I mean, I could like go on and on about this. But these are all examples of cities that use the frontage requirement. And developers especially are not surprised by this requirement. They're familiar with it, with both the complexity and the cost. I want to finish with saying that if you've watched TV in the last two months, you've probably seen the annoying PG&E ad where the new CEO is touting the efforts they're making to encourage and perform undergrounding of power lines for safety reasons. It is not just aesthetically pleasing. It's really important, and it's really about safety. So I just respectfully request that that clarification be made and staff's future implementation. And other than that, thank you guys all for your time.
Thank you, Samantha.
We'll now be unmuting a number ending in 3097.
Hello, this is Remy Tan, architect, resident of Pacific Manor. Just wanted to thank the city and staff and the council for considering expanding the reach codes. It's really important for the climate change issues. I do want to address the geological hazard assessments, and that should actually include anything in the sensitive coastal bluff area. We've had a historical issue of, you know, houses and apartments falling off into the ocean. So we want to make sure that that is clearly identified. And I believe it's also probably a requirement of the Coastal Commission as well, so that should be included in that. Regarding the underground utility, you know, it's a great idea. I just kind of wonder when it comes to single-family residential lots, which we have a lot in Pacifica in areas where there are overhead lines, if those lots are accepted, or the developer need to underground, you know, between the poles. That's not really clear. Actually, I'm undergoing a project in a different city with facing this very issue. So, you know, I think that needs to be addressed in that that particular section. Regarding the reach codes and the energy, I think we do need to make sure that we maximize the amount of EV charging and EV-ready spaces, because the amount of EVs that keep coming on the market, keep, there are more and more of them, they're better and better, and, you know, eventually the price is going to go down, and the state's mandated, I think by 2035, that no more gas engine cars could be sold in the state. So I think, you know, we need to make sure that that we really maximize that. Otherwise, that's going to be an issue in the pretty near term for new residents. And regarding gray water, you know, Christine Bowles, she knows that pretty well. At the day, they have a gray water rain catchment system and so at their place. So great resource for that. You know, we really should have gray water and bring out a way how to pipe that in, you know, to to flush toilets, to reduce our water consumption. And, you know, it needs to be, the whole system needs to be done and installed and operational. There are a number of these gray water ordinance that just run the piping, but doesn't require gray water to be hooked up, which is kind of odd. Still want to make sure we don't do that, because-
Thank you so much, Remy. Thank you so much. We appreciate you calling.
Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
Thank you. Thanks.
That concludes the call-ins.
Okay, thank you so much. We will close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation. Sarah, would you mind putting up this, the slide that has the different areas that we're supposed to discuss?
Is the timer still showing to the people calling in?
Yes.
So they're still getting that timer?
Well, we have it on over here.
Right, I saw the light on, but can they see that?
Oh.
I don't think so.
Sarah, are the people that call in, are they getting that timer on their screen?
No, the timer does not display on the screen for the call-in users. So when I have the timer here going, and then the mayor can let them know that their time is expired.
Oh, okay. I was just curious, that's all. Thanks.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on some of the questions that came from the public, especially regarding the geotechnical. So how are properties identified was the first question I heard.
Sure, Mayor Protem. I have conceived of this the same way that the commenter did, that we would use the technical term. I think it's seismic-induced landslide hazard zones mapped by the Department of Conservation that are also mapped in our general plan, so that those areas with potential seismic-induced landslide hazards, I think it's a good proxy for areas that warrant this type of geotechnical investigation. But we could make it a different qualifier, such as, you know, sites with greater than 15 or 20 or 25% slope. There are different ways to go about it, but I think something that's clear and easy to administer is probably the safest bet, and would be my recommendation.
Thank you. The point is well taken, that there's legal implications for what we frankly can't do, which is authorize and going into a neighbor's property. But the question was around incorporating something about if the neighbor agrees or some sort of similar nomenclature. Legally, does that jibe?
I would certainly need to consult with the city attorney's office. It seems workable to include some sort of permissive language, you know, where property owner agreement can be obtained, you know, that the investigation may, you know, cede on an adjacent property, something along those lines.
I don't have anything to add. I mean, certainly, we can consider, I would just say, I think that that opportunity already exists, so the language would not really- Might encourage, but it-
It wouldn't necessarily provide.
So I'm not sure what the effectiveness of that would be, but we certainly consider looking into what common language would be possible.
Right. That's my understanding, is it would be aspirational language so as to encourage, even though there's no enforcement mechanism attached to it, right? And then the last question I heard had to do with, oh, so at what point would we be doing this analysis? Would it be during the planning review process? Because that was the, that was the suggestion, was that that analysis would take place during the planning review process.
Sure. So to be clear, you know, as was shown on the slide, and I'll restate it now, this local amendment, if enacted by the council, would supplement existing geotechnical hazard review processes for required in the general plan for discretionary review projects, such as those that go to the Planning Commission. This would not be in lieu of those analyses. And so for projects, very many of which there are in Pacifica, that don't go to the Planning Commission, this would require that level of review, to consider more circumspect or holistic geotechnical hazards, in addition to those that would be analyzed for projects that go to the Planning Commission, those projects that undergo environmental review, et cetera.
Okay. There was a different commenter's question, getting at the idea again of not not allowing an electrified building to incorporate gas, and that there should be very specific, clear nomenclature of no existing all-electric buildings can be converted into a mixed-fuel building. I heard you earlier when you were saying that depending on how we go about it, we could start crossing the line into existing structures, and what does that mean legally? And that's where it gets bogged down. Is there a place where we can have this very clear nomenclature inserted for the sake of what we're trying to effectuate?
Yes, I believe there is. And so, you know, we will need to consider the pros and cons of, you know, a few different approaches. But I think we can come up with language that's clear that buildings constructed after a particular date and time, for example, not become mixed-fuel buildings. That provides a clear distinction between, you know, other existing buildings, you know, and that more complicated policy discussion.
Okay. Thank you. And before I turn it over to the-
Oh, no, I just had a point on that point. I wanted, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Go for it.
Okay. We all know we have reach codes, okay? And reach codes, given our limited geography, are going to require mixed-use buildings. And I fully support the concept of not allowing an electric building to go to to mixed-fuel use. I think the commercial part on the bottom, if they want to be a restaurant that gets that, you know, a barbecue joint, something like that, that should be allowed for the restaurant first floor only for cooking, not for heating and everything else. That's a, do you want to discuss that? Or that's a point I wanted to bring up.
It's a good point.
They make everybody speechless?
Councilmember O'Neil, a thought that occurs to me, I'll just, in the silence there, I thought I'd jump in. I think one of the clarification points we need tonight relates to rest, cooking facilities, right? So new cooking facilities, and whether they're allowed to install gas. If the decision or the direction were to not allow new cooking facilities to use gas and be all-electric, then the point that you're talking about then becomes a discussion related to what happens to existing facilities. So in-
Future and existing facility.
-pertaining to gas.
Right.
Right? So that that, I just mentioned that in case that it shifts that conversation point to the future-
Conversation about the existing buildings.
Right, but there's the existing building, but if we want to have a downtown in Palmetto, I have brought up previously that I would really like to see the buildings there be built to allow restaurants for the ductwork fans and stuff like that that need to be done. So if it converts from a store to a new restaurant, that is a conversion to a for a- to a, for a commercial property, so we don't end up with, like what we have on Rockaway, a commercial space, prime view from the highway that can't be rented because it's nothing there. You know what I mean? So, that's the concern I'm bringing up.
And I think that it goes back to information that was shared to us from Margot from Bay Area Reach Codes.org, which talks about the non-residential buildings that contain kitchens located in a place of public accommodations, where it says they may apply to the local enforcing agency for modification to install commercial food, heating, processing equipment served by fuel gas. So it's, they could ask for the exception.
Okay.
That's, that's the language that was sent to us, which I think is, is really important language to add to our-
Oh, and I think that is good, but what we're, but the requirement we're discussing, confirmation of new, of, is it on this slide? We were talking about an exist, a new building that was going to be all-electric, and that's like a new restaurant going in for conversion. This is an existing building where the first floor might be converted to gas for barbecue or grill or whatever. See, there's a difference there between a new restaurant, I think, being built or whatever. So that's what I wanted to be sure, we're clear on it for, ooh, the city attorney's grabbing the mic.
No, I was just trying to clarify for the council where I think the discussion point that Councilmember O'Neill is bringing up, that it really does need to be a deliberation amongst the council to address that issue. And I think the issue is for new construction, that new construction is built all-electric. That new construction does not anticipate, and it's commercial, but it does not anticipate restaurant use. Does, does a restaurant use that goes in after the fact, would an exception be applied to that new restaurant use allow that's, that's the question. Because right now, I think the issue is, do, does the council want to have a, what, this is what her point is, a requirement that if a new building was constructed all-electric, they could not move to mixed fuel? And so, council review is where you have, is that- Well, what about the instance where an all-electric building has been constructed, not include a restaurant, and now, and it was commercial, but now a restaurant wants to go in, and is prohibited from doing so because they cannot use mixed fuel in that way? Council should deliberate on that. Now, that exception, for newly constructed buildings, there, if only in the instance, if there is a restaurant, I'm, I'm assuming that needed kitchen facilities that included mixed fuel, that be an exception that could be allowed at the discretion of the- That's really the discussion that we need to have.
And I remind everybody, we have a restaurant in an old train station, we have a restaurant in a caboose, we have a restaurant in a boxcar. And I recall the Pacifica Brewery at one time was a Garden Rock place. So we do have this instance happening, those are the four off the top of my head.
So I really appreciate the language that was presented to us. Could we use some of that language in that, in that exception as well?
Madam Mayor, if I could also add another complicating factor here, I strive to make your jobs easier, but I can't always do that. There's, there's the tension again between the immediate business needs of these particular restaurant owners that the council's struggling to accommodate potentially. But you'll recall from the study session, there is the longer-term question for business owners and property owners as to, many people, including our expert from Peninsula Clean Energy believes is a long-term phase-out of the existing gas infrastructure network. So if you think over the horizon that these buildings may be constructed, if we're talking about new buildings, you know, 30, 50, 70, 100 years, you know, you'd have to place your bet on one side or the other, but, you know, chances are, the potential exists for the gas infrastructure network to be phased out. And we just be accelerating that to some degree, something that may be occurring in, you know, 20 years. So, just keep that in mind when you're thinking about these, your questions about restaurant gas exceptions.
Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I, I think that if we're allowing for the restaurant exception, then we allow for that exception within that context specifically. And I, I'm not, if there was consensus on this council that we're not interested in the restaurant exception, then I could vote in that direction of making it nice and simple. And no, we're not going to, under any circumstances, allow this to become a mixed fuel. But if we're allowing for the exception for restaurants anyway, and the only exception in a building we allow as a mixed-fuel exception is if they are making it as a restaurant, then I'm okay with that exception in that context as long as we're very tight about how we word that in terms of that one and only exception.
But that doesn't, excuse me-
Please go right ahead.
That doesn't address the specific question about if the new construction doesn't put that in, and then five years later, a different business goes in and wants to have a restaurant now. I think the question Mike was posing is, could they invoke the exception at that point, even though it's not a new construction at that point? So what's your feeling on that?
I was saying, yes, if we're allowing the except, if we're allowing the exceptions for restaurants, because right now I'm in a place where I could easily go either way. But if we're allowing the exception for restaurants, we allow the exception for restaurants.
Well, there's a difference between the residential and the mixed-use and commercial. So maybe we just eliminate the conversion in residential. And not in the commercial mixed-use.
I'm okay with that.
I, I don't think that's tight enough. I, I think we just have to talk about restaurants only.
Through the chair, if I, if I may offer a comment here, again, this is Rafael Reyes.
Yeah, please, I, I appreciate it.
And maybe staff can, can confirm this, but my understanding is what's before the council at this time is strictly a, a new construction code. And with a new construction code, certainly the council could provide for an exception for restaurants. Some cities have done so. There is all-electric equipment that is available and that some restaurants are being built with all-electric equipment, but some cities are opting for an exception there. This would not speak, though, to an existing building once it's built. And I believe, my understanding from the staff presentation was anything related to an existing building, whether it's newish or not, so it could be five years down the road, anything in relation to that existing building would need to fall under an existing building code, which I believe staff's intention is to explore that at a later point. So in other words, a conversion where a restaurant comes in to a building that was all-electric, whether that was allowed or not, would need to be addressed in an existing building code. And if allowed, obviously, then the restaurant would need to install the, the gas system to allow that to happen.
Good. Thank you so much. Did you want to say something, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. I would suggest thinking of existing buildings as those not constructed as new buildings under this code. I think it's technically true that a new building once constructed and altered is an existing building, but I don't think that's the right construct. I think that's the loophole that one of the public commenters is asking the council to close. So similar to my answer earlier to Mayor Protem, yes, I think we can craft language. I'll need to check with the city attorney and her team, but perhaps something along the lines of any building constructed after the date of ordinance, right? January 1st, 2023 shall not be converted to a mixed-fuel building. Whether the council wants to provide, provide some other exception to that is a different policy question. But I don't think it's the right construct for tonight to think of such a building constructed after January 1st of 2023 as an existing building once it's built. We need to close that loophole in my recommendation, and really talk about existing buildings as those that exist as of today, essentially, right? Those that have already been constructed under some prior building code to that in effect on January 1st of 2023.
Thank you. I appreciate that guidance, because I think that's, that's what we're trying to get at, at least in my opinion.
So, then, I believe, I, I'm just trying to summarize here the way I understand it, okay? There seems to be three options. Yours would be option A, was any building built after January 1st, 2023, all-electric, does not have any option, restaurant, laundromat, anything, but will remain all-electric. So effectively, if that is a mixed-use building, residential on top, commercial on the bottom, the restaurant there would not have the choice of option B, which is to add gas for cooking if, if it's, if it's a building built after January 1st, 2023. So everything on Palmetto now would be eligible to, to do that, correct?
That's right. I don't have a particular policy recommendation. I'm just trying to simplify the category so the council can get its desired policy outcome. So I think, to your point, Councilmember O'Neill, if the council were to not venture into the existing building territory at this point in time, you know, upon adoption of this code, all the buildings that exist as of today on Palmetto would be eligible to convert if they're all-electric buildings, probably very few, if any, are, but, you know, they'd be able to add a gas line to a new restaurant that's coming in. That could change in the future if the council undertakes existing building reach codes and decides that some of those gas extensions should not be authorized, or those conversions should not be authorized. That's a different set of questions then. Should a new building allow a restaurant to have gas? That's policy question number one. If the answer's no, then it would certainly seem fine with that to prohibit existing building conversions at some point in the future. If the decision is to allow certain restaurants to have gas in new buildings, it would also seem the binding existing building policy to allow those conversions. But again, those are questions for some point in the future, most likely with respect to existing buildings. So my recommendation would be to think about the, the simplest question, if you will, which is, should there be an exception for new, in new buildings for restaurants to have gas? Say no, then perhaps some of the other questions flow more easily. If you don't think there should be gas, then maybe existing buildings shouldn't have gas at some point in the future, so on. If there should be an exception, then maybe exceptions should also be afforded to existing buildings. That might be a helpful starting point for the-
Folks.
I think they should have both, the options.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I believe that restaurants should have the option to have gas.
And that's either a new or existing building?
Yes.
But are you okay if the residential portion has to remain electric and there is no option to go to gas?
Yes.
Okay. And cooking for gas only?
Yes.
Or only gas for cooking? Yeah, okay.
The only exception being restaurants, yes, I will agree.
Yeah, and I think it's really important for us to pay attention to the information that has been provided to us by our community, because, especially the community that's been studying this topic for a really long time. So I am, I'm really wanting to, to include this language that was provided to us about the non-residential buildings containing kitchens. I think it's really good language, and it offers an exception. And there's certain findings that have to happen if they have the exception.
Which page in the packet is it?
Oh, it was a public comment.
I'm, I'm sorry. If, if you are asking your council members if they want, we need consensus from the council, whether or not everybody wants this language. And I'm not familiar with the language that you're referring to. I'm going to ask the planning director, are you familiar with the language that-
Thank you.
And can you sort of synthesize it for the council so they know what the mayor is referring to, so that they can either agree or, or not?
Oh, it's Margot's letter?
Yes, I believe Mayor Beer is referring to public comments in the supplemental public comment packet distributed after agenda publication earlier today by the city clerk. I see that language on PDF page five of that public comment packet. It's under the bold heading of first, and then there's a number one bullet point, and then, non-residential buildings containing kitchens, and so on. Here, Beer, is that the language?
Correct. That is the language. Thank you.
So, with respect to that proposed policy language, a lot of that's already contained in exception number four, in my opinion. That's cities' reach codes. So, the current exception to all electric building requirement, exception four reads as follows, "Non-residential buildings containing a for-profit restaurant open to the public may be approved at the discretion of the building official for an exception to install gas-fueled cooking appliances. This request must be based on a business-related reason to cook with a flame that cannot be reasonably achieved with an electric fuel source. Examples include barbecue-themed restaurants and pizza ovens." And then it goes on to provide additional criteria that the building official must use to evaluate and determine to or not to grant that exception request. So, there's perhaps some tweaking, maybe some updating, you know, as proposed by this commenter. We could certainly consider that. The core question is, does the council want to continue with this exception four in largely the same form? Does it want to broaden it to all restaurants? Or does it want to keep it more narrowly tailored as it's currently presented in exception four? So there are variations on this that, that staff needs to hear from the, the council.
Okay.
Okay. The phrase that you keep referring to, Mary, I have no problem with that. Okay, yeah. I mean, my only concern is, is, because the other language that we were receiving was, a new building built with, with electric could not change, could not become, what was the word, more fueled?
Converted to a mixed fuel.
Converted to mixed use. And I'm just concerned about the ground floor of a restaurant, that's all.
Okay. I hear you.
Okay. So, I think we're talking about the same thing.
I think we are, too.
Yeah, I think. And, and I have no problem limiting it to pizza ovens and barbecue, that kind of stuff. You know, an Italian place can boil water on induction, you know, to make pasta, you know, and now on.
So, just to get clarity, so are, are you saying that the, the current exception in number four is appropriate language? Or, because the language that is referred to in the public comment attachment is different than what the planning director just discussed. So, Mr. Murdock, maybe, can you please synthesize the distinction between those two, so the council knows what they're delivering?
I think some of the terminology is different, but largely the substance seems to be the same. I think one exception is in the suggested language by the public. They're talking about requiring installation of an Energy Star appliance, but I believe separate provisions of the energy code already require that. And so, I think, you know, just sort of a restatement with different terms, largely the same substance. We can take a more careful look if the council wants to continue forward with an exception for restaurants. That's really the core question, to allow us to do our work to prepare the ordinance. And if we come back and you, you want to massage the language further, more closely aligned with this public commenter's version, that's a change that we could make at that time as well.
Okay, thank you, Christian. I appreciate that. The rest of you?
I'm comfortable with exception four and the language from the Margot's email to us. As, as long as, you know, a new building, the residents stay the same, all-electric, but down below, they can cook on gas.
Okay, I think we need to be redirected to, back to where we belong.
Madam Mayor, I do need to ask, before moving on, the council previous- This seems like one applicable area where it's probably not all that controversial to allow the exception for existing buildings as well. I just want to be clear that that's the council's intent, not to limit it just to new buildings, allowing existing buildings.
Yes.
Yes. And every restaurant will be given the option, providing they meet this criteria, they can go gas or they can go electric, right? And they will sign a form that states which preference they have, right?
So it would be for the types of restaurants described in exception number four. They would have to make an affirmative application to the building official and provide evidence to support the findings that the building official...
And it would take into account any sort of ethnic, like hot pots, sometimes there are gas jets underneath the hot pot.
I was going to say, there are additional restaurants that use gas, like for instance, wok cooking.
Yeah.
They use a gas source. So there could be additional restaurant types other than the ones listed.
So it's in the council's discretion if it wants to expand the examples, but currently the substance of this exception is not limited to a particular type of food, ethnicity of food. It says...
Oh, it's just examples.
A business-related reason to cook with a flame.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you, sorry.
That sounds good to me.
Provides some flexibility and discretion for the building official to make that determination based on that reason and the other reasons in the exception.
Okay, so we still need to be redirected.
Well, I kind of hijacked Tiger, so...
Advance to the next slide.
It's okay, yeah, we just need to be redirected.
Well, before we go to the next slide, I just want to, can we talk about exception number two?
Sure.
Because what's on the slide and what's in the packet are different in regard to the concept of emergency centers. And what I'm grappling with is the same thing we are grappling with on the other item, on the restaurant item, is the difference between new construction and existing. Because I keep thinking about all the kitchens at the schools that are gas. Those exist. And so I'm thinking, what if the community center burns down and we have to replace it with a new building? Are we saying we would, according to what I see on the slide, be eliminating the exception to have gas cooking in the new community center kitchen that replaces the one that burns down? Because it's new.
Yes.
Do you see where I'm going?
Yes.
Yes, so that would be the outcome of this. I think at the study session, the concern was more so aligned with like backup generators, for example. But yes, it would apply more broadly than that. If you, emergency, a public agency-owned and operated emergency center were to be constructed, either as a new facility or to rebuild an old one, that gas prohibition would be removed based on the council's direction at study session.
Okay. I want to revisit and make sure we're good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that because there's going to be a, you know, we're moving toward the phasing out. Right, anyway, so we have to be prepared for that.
Okay.
And, you know, in the testimony at the study session, there were, you know, ample other methods of providing backup power, including diesel generators and so forth. There are alternatives that are technically feasible in it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now, we can go to the other slide.
So keeping on the building electrification reach codes for the time being, so with respect to the multifamily dwelling EV parking requirements, there was earlier discussion this evening, you know, describing both potential sides of an affordable housing exception, and we heard from Mr. Reyes from Peninsula Clean Energy that as of now, there are financial incentives to help reduce or eliminate the costs for 100% affordable housing developments. To be perfectly transparent, not all of the affordable housing units constructed in Pacifica will be 100% affordable housing units. Those are, you know, larger projects constructed by an affordable housing developer. Most of the projects the council is likely to see will arguably be BMR ordinance projects with 15% of those units as affordable units, for example. ECE's current funding solution may not be available for all affordable housing units at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Mayor Beer, just as a reminder, as it's proposed now, it's at the developer's option. So, you know, the person perhaps most are best situated to make that financial decision, arguably would be the developer, saying, geez, we can't make this project pencil out and work if we EV chargers, right? And so then they'd be able to exclude them if the council were to move forward with the exception. So it's an option, not a mandate.
Thank you. And so what we need to tell you is if we're still okay with the direction that we gave you on the 27th, right? We're okay with it. So if we go section by section, it might be easier to get consensus on each one. So thank you for that. And so, are you following me? Are you following me, council?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're okay with that direction?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, the next one, Christian, lead us.
Slide, please. The next area we identified with respect to EV parking standards was for the non-residential. The model code presented by Peninsula Clean Energy, staff at the study session, included a requirement for EV-capable spaces. The council directed to change that to EV-ready. But where we need the council's guidance, if they're okay with that direction, is whether to create one or both of the new categories. I believe it was Councilmember O'Neill that brought up the question of overnight accommodations. I can't recall which council member brought up the public parking lots land use type, but those were the two that would deviate from the model code. So really, the question is, does the council think there's a necessity to create one or both of those distinct categories? So what should be the appropriate parking standards? And so staff has included a recommendation. We've detailed it in the staff report. Generally based on the type of use and how it relates to the other uses, we made recommended adjustments to the level-two EV charging station and level-two EV-ready percentages of off-street parking spaces.
Council? You okay with that?
Yep, I'm fine.
I am, too.
All good.
Thank you.
Check the next slide where we need... So let me just ask, is there a desire by the council to go and speak further about the geotechnical hazard, local amendment, or the underground utilities? Imagine we might be able to spend some time on the gray water reach code and I'd keep that for last if we can.
Yes, I would say yes to both those. We want to discuss them, yeah?
Undergrounding.
The undergrounding, yeah, and the geotechnical.
Just a question. What would we consider the definition of new development, okay, in ADUs? Now, I support the undergrounding. However, we all know back in Park, Pacifica, there's some of those that actually have a driveway that's so long, there's maybe two, there's two houses back there now. If they each put it in ADU and stuff, is that considered new development? Do I have to underground for ADU? Or is, do they just, does an ADU, does it have its own meter or does it usually set off from the house?
So that is at the option of the project applicant, and PG needs to incur installation of the new meter. The city's ordinance does not require installation of a new meter for ADU. And with respect to the undergrounding, really the question depends on the available service at the property to begin with. In some cases, but probably relatively few, there's enough panel space to connect the ADU or to install a sub-panel. In some cases, a service upgrade is needed. So in the instance where there's a service upgrade, there may need to be new lines run, and arguably those lines, not arguably, those upgraded lines would likely need to be undergrounded under this ordinance. In either case, whether the existing service can accommodate it or a service upgrade's needed, the connection between the new building to the detached ADU in that example would need to be called underground.
So that could potentially, if we require the undergrounding, that could potentially increase the cost of affordable housing, if they're building an ADU or something, right?
Yes, I think it's likely to increase the cost of that project.
But they were also saying that as we phase out, it would be more expensive later to get rid of the gas.
No, I'm talking about electrical connections to the ADU.
No, I understand that.
Oh, okay.
But it would be more expensive later, is what I understand. Anyway, okay.
So, okay, am I going down another black hole?
I kind of feel like it.
Okay, if I'm going down a black hole, then forget it. I'm gone in six weeks, so it's okay. But, you know.
Mayor Potem.
I think Mary's point is that the entire state is going to a place where eventually we're getting rid of gas.
Yeah.
And what may save them money today might cost them a lot more tomorrow.
Thank you.
That having been said, the last point I was going to bring up on the other side was that as we enter this discussion about undergrounding, this is really where I, it would be helpful for me to have had Planning Commission have this conversation ahead of our deliberation. It, having listened to many of their conversations around this topic when it came to nuancing the general plan, I feel like this is the last little thing that they should be giving us feedback on to make sure that we're properly in alignment with what some of their feedback intention was, that we ultimately incorporated. And hearing Samantha call in tonight, she was talking a mile a minute because I could hear how much she was trying to offer us, and rather than hear that in a three-minute soundbite, I'd like to hear that conversation with the full Planning Commission so I have some idea of all the pros and cons. And then whether or not they jibe with what we need to do in order to get this thing done already in, you know, a month, because I appreciate that also. But it would be helpful for me to have those brains that are more attuned with this kind of work have that discussion ahead of, at least myself having that discussion, whom, you know, on any given day is a humble food clerk. So I can have this discussion with council from there, but that's my recommendation is just insert one Planning Commission meeting where they chew on this for a moment so that we have a better idea of exactly what we're discussing.
Sure. For some additional context for the council, it wasn't articulated in the staff report, but at least the new utility line undergrounding requirement has been a standard practice for the city for years and years. This ordinance, with respect to new utility lines in any case, would not change a past practice. Out of all those years of encouraging and telling applicants to underground, I'm aware of one instance that occurred this year where a property owner building a new single-family home refused underground and said it's not a requirement. That prompted the city to review its regulations, determine we didn't have an ordinance requiring what we were already doing, and to put this together. I'm not in a position, and perhaps Public Works Director Lisa Peterson could comment, I don't know if it's also been standard practice for upgraded services to also be undergrounded. I'm not familiar with that particular point. But if the council were to want further input, maybe it's on any new component to this practice because the city's already been undertaking the new utility, underground installation for years and years at this point.
And I would like to add that I think there's really practical considerations timeline-wise, whether we could bring an item to the Planning Commission and get back to the council by November 28th for adoption of these reach codes, you know, draft an ordinance that, which is the direction from council and Planning Commission, if it went to Planning Commission, back to council by November 28th for adoption because these codes need to go into effect 30 days later prior to January first. So I think there's a real practical timeline there that if the vision is to have Planning Commission weigh in on this issue, one option would be to adopt a version now and then reach... Pull it in the future or push it into the future when you go, if you identify or kind of in the future to talk about existing buildings, et cetera, to take it up to utility underground. With planning's focus on...
It seems like the opportunity for, I don't know enough about this thing that keeps getting brought to my attention about undergrounding the poles if it's a subdivision or a commercial building. That's this part that I keep hiccuping on in my brain, and that's the part where I feel like we might actually have that opportunity right now to insert it now, but I don't know that part. So what you're saying is the Planning Commission could not look at this on the seventh of November, because that would be the next time it's brought to us is the 14th?
That would require me to write a staff report by Wednesday. It incorporates all the analysis and nuance of this particular...
Okay, that I appreciate. Thank you.
Pardon me, it would be a week from Wednesday, so not this Wednesday, but the following Wednesday.
Well, in that case.
But I think there's a very real aspect of biting that off for a Planning Commission discussion and yet still drafting an ordinance that meets those needs and council direction by November 28th.
That would be an extreme challenge for me, given the upcoming city, or the upcoming community meetings for the housing element, technical work to prepare the draft by the end of this year.
I'll let my fellow council members weigh in, but it occurs to me that, you know, if we have to send it back to planning to incorporate a thing about bars into the outdoor, this seems to have a little bit more gravity to my understanding, and it's frustrating for me that what wasn't incorporated into the plan was to have planning look at something that's building-related. So if the best we can do is, okay, we'll incorporate that into the existing code discussion when we come back in March, I can swallow that and be okay with that if that's consensus, but that's my frustration right now.
Understood. And I need to clarify for the council, utility undergrounding means different things. What we're striving to do here is to codify what had been a standard practice by the city to require underground installation of new utility lines. What the public commenter and what Mayor Potem is describing, undergrounding existing utility poles is an entirely different matter, subject to entirely different regulations, legal considerations, financial implications, coordination requirements, and those need considerable thoughtful analysis. And I would agree that the Planning Commission would probably have helpful insights into that process, keeping in mind that it's already something that can be evaluated through the discretionary review process for larger projects, such as those mentioned by the commenter, mixed-use buildings, commercial buildings, all of which are already going to the Planning Commission for a discretionary review process. General plan incorporated very supportive policies to help the city require the undergrounding of existing utility poles across project frontages. What we're talking about here is 95% of projects in Pacifica being single-family home projects, making sure their new utility connections are installed underground.
Curious.
Not undergrounding existing utility poles, which is an entirely different issue. New subdivisions are required to install underground utilities, so really none of those issues come into play with what staff had contemplated and is looking to address.
Local amendment.
And for the sake of my peace of mind, this is something we can contemplate in March when we talk about existing code, yeah?
Yes, I think this is sort of part and parcel to any other local amendments the council wants to consider, including reach codes for existing buildings, how to retrofit, if you will, or underground existing utility poles. There's perhaps another universe of policy considerations that go beyond new buildings.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. I'm okay with the exceptions here.
I understand the reason for this because especially that last, it's an infill project and it's between two houses that have poles, yet we required undergrounding, and it makes it complicated, and it was a very complicated issue and was stopping someone from getting their project done because of it. So I understand why we have this codified now. And has every other building, new building, undergrounded as we requested, other than this one?
To my knowledge, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We're okay. All right, we can move on. Christian, thank you.
Um, can we go to the prior slide, City Clerk? But to refresh the council's memory, this issue came up during the general plan update process. Um, there were members of the public that, um, thought that the city should require more comprehensive geotechnical hazard assessments beyond what's included in the California Building Code and California Residential Code, which are very site-specific and primarily focused on the design of the building being constructed. There was reflection on the city's experiences with past geotechnical hazards and thought being if more thoughtful assessment had been done of up slope and down slope hazards, perhaps other interventions could have protected life and property in those instances. This would take one step in that direction to require, uh, broader assessment of potential geotechnical hazards, uh, but reflecting the legal limitations of the city's authority. Its inability to require and authorize property owners to allow others to enter their property, um, to, to perform geotechnical assessments and so forth. So again, would be a supplement to other existing general plan policies and California Environmental Quality Act requirements to analyze geotechnical hazards that exist as part of the discretionary review process. This would fill a gap that exists in the city's processes currently, uh, which is that projects that only require a building permit would not go through any of those other, or environmental, uh, review processes. And this would ensure, uh, as a backstop of sorts, that all projects will have undergone at least some type of consideration of off-site geotechnical hazards related to the proposed project.
Yes.
Yes, were we talking about specific degrees of up slope or down slope?
Uh, so, uh, Councilmember Adalas, I think the question came up, you know, what's the, the triggering criteria for this, uh, expanded analysis? Um, there's more than one way to go about it. Uh, one readily, uh, available way that's able for the city and applicants to administer is whether it's in a state-identified, um, geotechnical hazard zone, either liquefaction or seismic-induced landslide. Those seem to, to be a good place to start, uh, from my perspective. Other approaches such as average slope of the property or, or whatever else likely would require some professional in the first instance to survey the property, determine the average slope. And so then many more applicants would be incurring costs just to perhaps conclude they don't have to do the analysis. So starting with the maps might be a good, a good place.
Sounds good.
And then we had a public comment that talked about, um, that it should be done during the planning review process and not the building permit review process. Can you comment on that?
Absolutely, Mayor. So, um, many projects, but not all projects, require something called a discretionary permit or discretionary review. That's where a public hearing is required at the Planning Commission and, um, the city can impose conditions, consider hazards, et cetera, and in many cases undertake environmental review of those projects, all of which are opportunities for the city to apply general plan policies, environmental review mitigations, et cetera, to, uh, address geotechnical hazards. However, most projects in Pacifica don't go through that process. They're known as ministerial projects. And they only require a building permit and there's no public hearing and no ability for the city to condition the project or apply mitigations. So what this does is require the geotechnical engineer or civil engineer for the project to consider these geotechnical hazards as part of their building design. And the building code requires then that the project be designed to incorporate those recommendations from the appropriate design professional. So this would fill a gap in the city's process currently to require any geotechnical hazard consideration beyond the building design itself. This would require the, those design professionals to look up slope and to look down slope, determine how the site could be affected by other hazards or how this project could increase hazards to other properties.
Okay, thank you so much. Everybody okay?
Allow me a moment just to
Yeah.
Might remain for. Uh, so I think the last item remaining is discussion of the reach codes for gray water.
Yeah.
So at the September 27th study session, uh, I think in response to public comments, the city council wanted some, uh, preliminary analysis of options related to gray water. Um, the town of Portola Valley's gray water ordinance was used as an example. Uh, we evaluated that ordinance and, and provided some analysis and recommendations related to, uh, those regulations adopted by the town of Portola Valley. There may be other, uh, example ordinances, but staff did not, um, have the, the time or ability to go through and consider, uh, alternative approaches. But it does seem, um, that there may be more and less intensive options to consider with respect to a gray water ordinance. Um, and so if the council's interested at all, we could perhaps come back with something short of, uh, you know, fuller approach, if you will, that the town of Portola Valley has set out here.
Uh, yeah, I think I'm definitely interested in that.
Um, since I brought this up, I would, I don't think we can do it for the reach codes currently today. But that's something I think probably in March when they do the, um, goal setting. But I would also like to include maybe capture of rainwater because, I mean, my gutters work even if we have a heavy fog. So you would be getting something, you know, and I know Samantha's working with the water district to get that plastic fog harvesting thing going. That might be a bit much, but I would encourage the council to look at that for goals and work planned in March next year.
Christian, would that be easier for you too, for your department, if we looked at it in the next work plan?
I, I will admit that, um, deferring any additional analysis at this point in time would be very helpful, given our staffing situation in the planning department.
Yeah.
Sounds great. Love that smile.
Agreed.
So I'm, I think I heard the council's consensus, yes, you're interested.
Yes.
See if we can, uh, add in, uh, capture of rainwater as well, but evaluate that as part of a work item if decided as much by the council in March as part of goal setting.
Correct.
Um, I think it'd also be worthwhile to see if we could even, and I don't know if this is something, but I know there's recycled water that some cities are putting in new developments, something like in Sacramento area, two pipes, one purple, one regular, so that recycled water at some point could be pumped out to houses. I don't know if that's something you'd want to put in the work plan or not. Cause we're already doing that at Ingrid B. Lacy Field. Is it, there's another school field. Is it Oceana? Okay. Yeah.
Uh, so that's, that's yet another, um, particular option. Um, there are, I think, more practical, uh, considerations for that, given the availability cost of installing, um, recycled water infrastructure. The Planning Commission did consider that, for example, in the Sharp Park specific plan. And so, uh, they, uh, have a policy that's, uh, supportive of including those connections where available. Uh, but as that system currently exists in Pacifica, there are some regulatory issues as well in terms of metering and access for private parties. That would be a, a very, um, specific undertaking if the council wanted to do that. And the availability of that, given the infrastructure is relatively limited today to the Sharp Park area primarily.
Okay. Did you get everything you needed from us?
I did, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Mayor, there were several references to things in March for goal setting. I, I just want to go back and clarify as we did in the previous study session that we're not analyzing and preparing, assessing all these issues for goal setting?
Correct.
Goal setting is to, is this going to be on the work plan for next fiscal year?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
And right after that happened, engineering doing assessments of those handrails in order to determine what we had to do to make sure safety on the pier and all the handrails were secure. We did encounter some challenges in moving this project forward. One of those challenges was trying to secure grant funding for the project. Now, we were able to secure, uh, two grants, one from Coastal Conservancy and also one from the state. Another challenge we had was the construction cost index. And as many of you know, that's been going up rapidly. As a matter of fact, in 2020 to 2021, it went up 13.4% and is rising. So that of course does add additional challenges to this project. Now, um, we tonight do have a recommendation that we are putting forward to council in order to move forward this project despite these challenges that we've been encountering. And Project Manager Marquez will be providing a presentation related to our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Peterson. Uh, Director Peterson briefly touched on the timeline and I just wanted to kind of reiterate it to, uh, give us more context as we move into our discussion this evening on the Pacifica Pier. Um, so as Director Peterson pointed out, in January of 2021, um, city public works staff found, uh, pier damage at the L section of the pier. That's the section of pier first that, um, on the pier, uh, runs parallel to each overpart. Picture on the slide left, the damage was on, uh, pier handrail. And, um, subsequently after that, uh, pier was closed for a number of months and GHD, city hired GHD to, uh, observe the pier panels and come up with a report on, uh, the safety of those panels to see to reopen the pier. Um, I'm not having a lot of
I'm not sure if you're coming through.
Is this better?
Yes.
All right. Thank you for telling me. Um, so sorry, just, uh, we're in the timeline here in the, uh, March, April, the second bullet point here. So in March, uh, April of 2021, uh, the pier observation report on just the panels was completed. And, um, it detailed the condition of all of the pier panels, the handrails, and, uh, allowed for the main pier spine to be reopened. Following year, the project went through, um, funding as well as completing design. April and May of 2022, uh, the project went out to bid where the scope was to replace all of the pier handrails. And unfortunately, got one bid of $3.2 million. Uh, this was substantially higher than our project budget. And because it was only one bid, as we usually do with one bid, we rejected bids and opted to go out for a rebid. Between June and August of 2022, went out for, um, the, the project team got together and came up with a redesign as well as a reinspection of the pier handrails. And, uh, during this second bid, there was more interest in the project. We were able to get five bids from eight pre-qualified contractors. Um, and this scope was for about 30% of the pier handrails, only the most severe handrails to get those, um, done. So the low bid that came in in August was $1.4 million. And so that moves us to today, which is the discussion on these bids and moving forward with the pier work. So as I kind of just touched on, uh, we got five bids in August 16th as our second bid. And this was for roughly 30% of the handrails. Uh, the low bid was about 1.4 million from power engineering construction. Uh, staff believes that with, uh, construction management, design, construction support and contingency, uh, the total project would be looking at about 1.9 million. And, um, so that would mean that we would need approximately 1.2 million in additional budget, likely from disaster accounting fund if we are to move forward with this project at this time. However, during the redesign, uh, GHD was able to re-inspect all the pier panels. Um, and what they found was that the severe category, which is the worst category of condition, uh, were actually deteriorating slower than they anticipated. So the main findings of that report are, are, are in attachment B, but are also detailed here that 26% of the panels need to be replaced in the next two years. That about 85% of the panels need to be replaced in the next five years. And all of them should be replaced in the next 10 years. Just to give you guys a price point and understanding of, of what full replacement looks like, it would cost around with around 3.5 to 4 million. And that was priced from our bid in August of 2022. So there is substantial investment that would need, um, to be put into the pier just in the near, in the near-term future. However, the big picture result of this inspection, um, for this particular project was that there is more time than, than originally anticipated to repair the handles. And so that moves us to the second portion of the recommendation for this evening is to undertake a full pier structural assessment. So in addition to the, to the handrails, there's obviously a number of other structural components to the pier. This time, um, GHD as well as, uh, city staff are recommending to inspect those for various different reasons. Um, the, the proposed structural assessment in front of you this evening would look at the pier abutment. So the pier abutment is of course where Chit Chat Cafe, um, stands. So it either would be coring into abutment to ensure that everything's okay underneath it. Uh, it would, um, look at the underside of, of the pier deck, inside the pier deck, surface of the deck and of course the piles of the pier, which would include dive team going underneath and checking their condition. Uh, the assessment is estimated at $167,000 and staff is advising at $50,000. The assessment is estimated at $167,000, and staff is advising at $50,000 contingency some more needed inspection while we're out there. This assessment will give us a comprehensive understanding of future work that we need to do on the pier in order to keep it operational. But more so, it'll allow us to develop a work plan for the entire pier. So it'll allow us to get a work plan that has the work in sequential order. So we're not going out there and redoing work that we just did. And then it also allows us more time for budgeting and trying to finance. I will say, though, that maintenance grants are few and far between and that for this work, we have got grants from state budget through specified grants. So we'd likely be looking, trying to look into that avenue. I just want to bring up that they are few and far between to get me. But this also, doing this assessment also will give us the opportunity, so not certainty, but opportunity, to possibly do all the needed repair work that may on the pier at once. So this could mean less closure time, and this could mean taking advantage of a scale. So it means, you know, if you have more work out there, you're possibly getting a better price. So that's one other benefit of possibly doing that right now. So just to summarize kind of the thought process and how we went through this was there was initial one-year window to get a certain number of panels that needed to get replaced. So Public Works jumped on trying to find grants and getting the design in place. We were successful in receiving $760,000 in grants. Unfortunately, that first bid came in high, and we only received one bid. So we went back to the drawing board to redesign, to re-inspect, and rebid. Second bid still came in above the project budget. However, during that second bid, the reinspection gave us a new two-year window from September 2020 on the most severe panels. And so that was because the deterioration found in those panels was slower than anticipated in the 2020. This two-year window allows us more time to look at, a comprehensive look at the pier to ensure we're addressing all the issues. And it also, again, allows more time to pursue outside funding. This changed information has led to the change of works recommendation at this time from moving forward with the construction of the repair of the handrails to doing a full structural assessment. So the recommended action before you this evening is to reject the current bids, which puts the project on hold, to authorize the structural assessment to start underway with $217,000 in budget from State Parks Grant, and to install temporary likely chain-link safety fence on the L. I didn't touch on this in my presentation, but GHD has cleared the L to reopen to the public once we put in safety railing. So we thought it prudent to go in now if we're going to be planning the next year or so plus, to go in and put in some fencing, some temporary fencing there so that we can get it open to the public because we know the public and the Coastal Commission would really like it open at this time. So the last item would be to come back and reassess once we're done with the structural assessment, to come up with a, you know, a little larger scale work plan and to walk through the next steps on the pier. And so why we think that this recommended action is best is because, just harping on these again, is it allows us a comprehensive understanding of the work and the costs on the full pier, right? Not just the handrails. It allows us more times to look for funding or budget funding because we need more budget for this project, just for the handrails alone. And it does allow for the L to open with temporary fencing, so it would have a fully operational pier. That'll open it up to questions.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Is it true that the last substantial structural assessment was 20 years ago in 2002?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And I really appreciate that this affords me the opportunity to learn more about how the pier physically works before, the other day, I did not know what a box girder was, let alone that someone presumably could fit inside of one. Are the wood part, so the pillars that actually hold the pier up, are those wood or are they concrete or how does that work?
The pilings, the pilings are concrete. You're talking about the legs on the pier?
The legs, yeah.
Yeah, so those are pilings and they're deeply embedded into the ocean floor.
Okay. I don't know why they always looked wood to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Bottalas.
I was going to ask when the last assessment was done, but Tiger asked that before I did. Thanks.
I have a question. Can you explain the fencing that will be placed on the L shape? Can you like give us some details about that maybe?
Sure, yeah. So we haven't finalized the details there. We more of are looking for direction from council for staff to, you know, finalize those details and look into it. I think what we're looking at right now is chain-link fencing the same height as what the railing is out there right now. And it would be safety rated, right? So it would be, it wouldn't be just your standard chain-link that you see somebody's yard. It would be like you're piping than that, and it would be bolted into the concrete deck, and it would be attached to the panels on both sides of the fallen pier. So the panel that's there would be removed, and it would all be cleaned up, and it would be safe to have folks out there.
And then, so if there's, okay, so if we do the full inspection, is there still enough funding? And I'm sorry if this was already answered in here, but is there enough funding then to create a strategic plan for repair? How does that work? Because we would need a plan in place to get money, right?
Yeah, so within the structural assessment, there is some scope to come up with like opinion of costs and to detail, you know, what those repairs might look like. So it would, it would be like a mini kind of plan, so to speak.
Mini is kind of a bummer. We would like a big one. Councilmember Beckmeyer followed by Mayor Protem.
So I think following on to that, I was wondering about if what we would end up with would enable us to then seek future grants for the different elements of the project that would need to be done, whatever they may be, based on the structural and comprehensive analysis that you're proposing here. So would we have enough of a plan?
Yeah, I think we'd have a good understanding of costs and the scope of work that we would need. So we'd be able to, yeah, we'd be able to detail what type of funding we need for what the fixes, and then we would go into further design and detail.
Into engineering, designing, and all that.
Yeah, that's right.
Next question, going back to the 2002 analysis. Was that at the time that the last significant repairs were done to the pier or prior to that? Do you know?
So my understanding was that there's been various repairs since that 2002 inspection on different elements. I think the last major one, I believe, was in 2013. There's been ongoing every few years, there's been work out there.
I'm just remembering, like.
Mike, you might remember. When we deliberate, you can give us background on, there was like a $5 million grant. I don't think anyone can hear you either. So.
I was just wondering about the funding source for the last big significant, I think it was $5 million or something. I don't have the specifics.
I got Mr. Councilmember O'Neil, Mike.
I could, I do believe that we did receive some large grant. Before our time, but substantial amount of state funding that went.
From my look at the project files, it does seem like, for the most part, it's state, either Coastal Conservancy or other avenues. Certainly something we're going to have to keep in mind and something I can look up. And we've been keeping an eye on tabs on grants for this type of work, you know, because we've been trying to do this project. So there are a few.
Mayor Protem.
Would you mind bringing that last image back up for a moment, please? Thank you. And specifically, I'm asking about the pier abutment. When you talk about the assessment work being done, you're talking about the concrete deck kind of in the center of it, right? You're not talking about the outer edge that's visible in this picture here?
Yeah, that's correct. We're talking about the concrete surfacing that you walk on, not the wall portion.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, if we have no more questions, then we can open it up to public comment. So if you are, if you're calling in, if you could call in now, get into the queue, you could dial 650-898-6965. Conference ID is 383609442. Press star five to raise your hand and star six to unmute when called upon by the last four digits of your phone number. We do have one card, Christine Bowles, but I believe she left. Correct?
Maybe she'll call in.
Maybe. Do we have any callers? Okay, maybe that's Christine. Go ahead.
Hello, this is Remy Tan, architect, Pacific Manor again. Thank you, City Council and Public Works Department for actually doing this and actually taking a comprehensive look at the pier. I mean, it looks like, just looking outwardly, there's a lot of, you know, visible rust and cracking on that pier. And it'd be really good idea to get this assessment, you know, for the whole of law, safety of the public. And hopefully, from the assessment, we can figure out, you know, a cost-effective way of, you know, repairing the entire pier as well as maybe come up with a, you know, cost-effective solution for the handrails, which, you know, hopefully go back in as an open handrail, much like some of the peers, recreational peers in San Francisco and down in LA. I mean, it's unfortunately, you know, with the current pier handrail design, it's solid and, you know, younger children can't see over the top of the railing. And it's also, you know, looks pretty ugly. It'd be nice to have a, you know, more transparent railing, you know, moving forward, which hopefully be less costly than design. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. I'm sorry, did you say there's no more? Okay. I think I'm having a hard time hearing everybody tonight. We're going to close public comment, bring it back to council for deliberation. Who would like to go first? I mean, for me, we have to have a full assessment of the pier before we should do anything else because it's just, it wouldn't be worth the money to do like tiny little repairs here and there when we know there's going to need, there's going to be a lot of things that are going to need to be done to the pier. We all know that. And so like by doing a full assessment, we're going to find things that are wrong, obviously. So I think we have to prepare for that. And then, you know, we have to get out there and talk to our state legislators and our policymakers to try to get some funding in. And I'm not saying you have to do that, Ryan. I'm saying we have to do that. We need, we have work to do. Anyway, so I agree with your recommendations. Mike O'Neil.
Kevin, when we put in our wish list with Jackie Spear, did we include replacement or repair the pier?
Yeah, I don't think that we did. Final submittals, it was.
Bring to the community projects?
Yes.
I think this year it was Sharp Park.
Right, Sharp Park, Francisco, Bradford.
So I fully agree that we need a full assessment of the pier, you know, because we just keep pouring money into something that just keeps rotting away. It doesn't make much sense. But once we get the money, is this going to require like a coastal development permit and like a year delay, you know, sitting on the Coastal Commission's desk?
It's tough to speak to that at this time without knowing the repairs. I will say that for this most recent round, the handrail replacement, they gave us a waiver, and it was a matter of months. And we've been working well in understanding why the pier was closed and why we continue to have it closed in our ongoing work. The Coastal Commission does see the pier as a very good asset, you know, for coastal access. And so I think it's in her best interest to continue to see it that way.
Well, I fully support repairing the pier and everything, but my concern is that we take and we get a grant in inflationary, I mean, construction permit, construction inflation in the Bay Area in the recent past has been higher than the general inflation area and that we're, we just keep chasing and we're on a treadmill of getting a grant. And then because of the Coastal Commission delays, you know, because they take nine months to, you know, check the formatting, that we'll never be able to finish it. Is it possible to apply and get like, this is the design we're granting, we're applying to grants for so that we can start from the get-go for the grant when we get a grant?
There's certainly a possibility of doing design before getting grants. Another way to hedge against that is just to consider a bigger contingency, knowing that the permitting or environmental is going to take some time and that the construction price might go up during that.
But I mean, that could just be an endless cycle because, you know, we have to keep, it goes up, the grant doesn't meet it, so we have to apply for another grant, and it just kind of, Lisa wants to talk.
No.
No.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Neil. Yeah, so I think, you know, this is very relevant, what you're talking about, and it's definitely something that we've been experiencing, especially recently with the construction cost index that I just mentioned. And, you know, we will definitely be reaching out to Coastal Commission ahead of time as soon as, you know, we have direction from the council on how we're going to be pursuing this, how we're going to be moving forward and, you know, work with them in order to get, you know, some ideas how we can expedite this. I think one good thing, and, you know, Ryan could speak to this more if needed, but we have definitely heard from Coastal Commission asking us, hey, when's the pier going to get open? Hey, we're interested in this project. So I think they are, you know, probably getting some energy from the community about the pier, and I think they do realize it is a very beloved asset of the community. So I think that's probably in our favor.
I know in my conversations with other council members, they look at the pier as a regional asset. And they tell me they're, they've come over here and seen more of their residents over there than they do in their downtown. So I really do think when we apply, we need to go to especially South San Francisco, especially Daly City, and get letters of support from their council for this because it is looked at as a regional asset. And I know I think even the Harbor Board looks at it as a regional asset. And I just think that that's something that we need to exert all the pressure we can to get them to move. Because my biggest concern is we get a grant and then we have to return the grant because we, it's not enough to fix it because of the construction price index.
Yes, thank you.
It's a great idea. Mayor Protem.
I just wanted to dovetail off of what Mike was saying because I spend some regular time in Oakland. And when I'm telling people, hey, I'm from Pacifica, they immediately go to the pier and talk about how they spend time at the pier. So not that I'm asking to get a letter from Oakland, but the point is well taken that it's an extraordinary. it's an extraordinary regional asset.
Well, I think there's only probably about three or four of those type of piers in the Bay. I know Richmond has one. I mean, but we're the only one from San Francisco to Santa Cruz that's on the ocean. The rest are in the Bay.
Oh, we're totally gonna need to protect it any way that we possibly can.
Yeah.
We need to protect it, so.
So.
Okay, are we all in agreement?
I think we are. So we need to have a motion.
Oh, do we have a motion?
I move to reject the bid for the Pacifica Pier Handrail Repair. Authorize the city manager to award and execute a master services agreement and task order number one with GHD Inc., attachment A, in the amount not to exceed $167,252 and allocate $217,252 in budget for the pier structural assessment from the pier handrail repair project.
I'll second.
That vote passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto our last item of the evening, which is our appointments to the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, and Economic Development Committee. Sarah Coffey is going to present the staff report and lead us through this process.
Herr and council members, the city recruited for applicants for the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, and the Economic Development Committee. There are two vacant positions, two positions recruited for under Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, one for a full four-year term to expire in May of 2026, and one for a partial term to expire in May of 2024. Recruited for three positions on the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, one for a full four-year term to expire May 2026, one partial term to expire May 2024, and one partial term to expire May 2025. Recruited for two positions on the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, both for full four-year terms to expire October 2026. And finally recruited for five positions on the Economic Development Committee, one full four-year term to expire October 2026, one partial term to expire October 2023, partial terms to expire October 2024, one partial term to expire October 2025. After extending the application period a few times, treatment notices going out in the Pacifica, also in the city's Act with Pacifica and on the city website. City received five timely applications for the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, two timely applications for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, two applications for the Emergency Preparedness and Safe, and four timely applications for the Economic Development Committee. Interviews were conducted by the city council at a special city council meeting on October 17th, 2022. Applicants. Because the number of positions exceeds the number of applicants for some, it's anticipated that there will be vacancies left following these selections made tonight on the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee, possibly on the Emergency Preparedness and on the With that, I invite the council members to deliberate, census, nominations, naming applicants to specified, specifying the firm to which point.
Okay, how about we open a public comment first?
Yes.
Is that okay? Great. I'm gonna open a public comment for this item. If you are on the phone, please dial in now to get into the queue, 650-898-6965. The conference ID is 383609442. You'll praise, press star five to raise your hand, star six to unmute. And if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make a public comment at this time, you can fill out a yellow card in the back, make a public comment on this item.
Sarah? I didn't print the ballots because you usually hand one out. Do you have the ballots with you?
Yeah, no, we won't be doing this by paper ballot, but just by, through open discussion and deliberation as we've done in the past council meetings.
Okay.
But do we have anyone on the phone?
We have one person on the phone and their hand is not raised.
Person on the phone.
I'm sorry.
I know, but maybe we should remind them to raise their hands. If you'd like to speak, you can press star five to raise your hand. We'll give you a moment. All right, thank you so much. We're going to close public comment, bring it back.
Herr Pierre, I'd like to point out a written public comment that was received by one of the applicants today.
Thank you.
This is from Lauren Goodmiller. She is an applicant for the, for the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee. And she was respectfully requesting to be appointed to the term that would end in May 2024, but to the partial term for the opens.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay.
All right.
I will.
Before you do.
Yes.
I just wanted to remind us that I believe Ruby Tovar expressed an interest in either OSPAC or EDC if not chosen for PBNR. And I bring that up only because we have the two PBNR spaces and of the five applicants who applied for PBNR, she was the one who was willing to fill an EDC or an OSPAC if we don't vote her to PBR.
Right. And we do need an OSPAC.
Okay, and I wanted to mention Mr. McDermott also expressed interest in the open space.
I also had him express interest in economic development. That's what I had in my notes.
I think he kind of, he preferred open space to economic development. I think he.
Oh, no, you're right.
I think he mentioned he wasn't that interested in it.
You're right.
Yeah.
But then Ruby said she would be interested in either one.
Right.
Is that right?
So Ruby is interested in three, by my recollection. Open space, EDC, and PBNR. And McDermott, who applied for PBNR, is interested in open space.
Okay, let's begin our deliberation.
I'm gonna kind of ask a process. Did we just want each of us to say our top two or, or how, what's the process on this?
It looks like we have to deliberate for each nomination for each committee, naming the applicant nominated and indicating the position in turn.
Okay, so then like the first one, somebody makes a motion and then it either dies for lack of a second or we vote, vote, and then we see what happens with three.
Is that, is that right?
Yes, you can deliberate to come to a consensus for a nomination or a council member can make a nomination for a specific applicant. I would suggest making nominations for each committee commission separately. You can do that for, you can, for instance, for Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, you can name an applicant to nominate for the full term and then, and also an applicant to name for the partial term. So make that motion and then a second end of vote.
Am I allowed to make a motion?
Yes, you are.
I am allowed to make a motion.
You're not?
Okay, no, I am.
Yes, you are.
Okay, I would like to.
According to Roberts rules now, but we'll let you.
Oh, thanks. Well, I would like to make a motion for, for Park and Rec, for Stephanie Phillips and Dahlia Rodriguez. Do I have a second?
One short term, which one short term, which one long?
Oh, apples and oranges. Full term for Stephanie and the partial term for Dahlia.
I agree with that.
Do you second that?
I second that.
Into your microphone?
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
I second.
Do we want to just have a discussion? I see a face down there, a furrowed brow.
Oh, sorry. Mayor Proton, didn't see your light.
No worries. Stephanie was definitely one of my top two. Dahlia was one of my top three.
I can, I'd like Ruby Tovar for Park and Rec.
But you said Ruby was interested in other.
Well, she applied for Park and Rec.
What you said.
So that would indicate to me number one, her first choice.
We have a motion on the floor.
We do.
So we can deliberate on that motion, but.
That motion has to be.
Heard whether it changes unless you want, somebody wants to remit a substitute motion with the maker of the motion.
I, well, I can't make a motion if there's a motion on the floor, can you?
You can, you can request a substitute. Would like to.
Oh, okay. I would like to.
Or to amend the motion.
Amend the motion from Dahlia Rodriguez to Ruby Tovar.
For that, for the short seat?
Yes. Stephanie for the first, the long seat.
What would that motion agree with your amendment?
I make a motion to amend the motion on the floor for Stephanie Phillips to expire May 2026 and Ruby Tovar to expire May 2024.
Does the maker of the motion agree with that?
You're the maker, I'm the second.
Oh, I don't agree with that.
Oh, okay.
Yep. I think the motion stands as it was originally proposed.
Can I say why I don't agree with it?
Sure, we're in discussion, so we can, right? You're in deliberation on the motion on the floor.
Is because we had only a few other people who said that they would be okay with being on other committee and commissions and Ruby was one of those people. And so I wanted, because we have spaces we need to fill, and not very many people said that they would be willing to fill other spaces. So I appreciate the ones that did.
Right, and I was thinking along the same lines, not to get too far into it.
But I think there's a lot of applicability within EDC of the recreational assets of the city.
Okay, Sarah, I guess we're gonna vote now on that motion? All right, vote on that motion.
Awkward.
Awkward.
And that motion to appoint Stephanie Phillips to the full position on Park Speeches and Recreation, Dahlia Rodriguez, as the partial term passes unanimously.
Okay, I nominate Lauren Goodmiller for the short term, Amanda Skaggs, oh, sorry, open space and parkland. Partial term, sorry, these are complicated, May 25 to Amanda Skaggs and partial term for May 2024 to Ian McDermott.
You need three.
I did three.
You did?
Goodmiller, Skaggs, McDermott.
I'll second.
Can you say the, I didn't write it down, I'm sorry. Could you say what the, what the years were again?
Oh, Lauren Goodmiller the short, Amanda the 2025, and Ian 2024.
Short, what is 2024? That's Lauren.
And that's what Lauren wanted, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Amanda's 25 and Ian's 26?
Yeah.
Amanda 26.
Yes.
I'm confused on my second is.
Sorry.
No, it's all right. Lauren asked for the 24, so I get that one. Is Amanda the 26 and Ian the 25 or is it vice versa?
Amanda 25, Ian 26.
I'm going to reverse my second only because since Amanda specifically applied to OSPAC and Ian didn't, I'd feel more comfortable giving her the 26 and Ian the 25.
Oh, yes, sorry. Okay, I will take back that motion and change it to your motion.
No, so there is an amendment to the maker of the motion.
Okay.
Maker of the motion.
Agrees.
The bad amendment's amended.
Agrees, sorry.
My second stands.
Maker of the motion or the amender of the motion read what the motion, what the motion actually states now.
We move that Lauren Goodmiller has one partial term to expire 2024, Amanda Skaggs has the full term that expires 2026, and Ian McDermott expires 2025, OSPAC.
And the maker of the motion accepts that amendment?
Yes.
And the second maker accepts that?
Yes.
Thank you, Michelle, for your help.
Thank you.
That motion passes unanimously.
I have a motion.
Yeah.
I move that we appoint Brager Blackburn and Anthony Guzzetta to the two full terms on Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission.
Second.
Motion by council member Beckmeyer and seconded by council member Vodarlos. That passes unanimously.
I have a motion.
Great.
I move that we appoint Brendan Berman, Matthew Doherty, Lauren Claire Smith, and Ruby Tovar to EDC with the following breakdown. Matthew for the full term. Brendan for the 2025. Lauren for the 2020. And Ruby for 2023.
I'll second with the friendly amendment that we put Ruby on the other 2024 because there are two 2024s.
Oh, yeah, you're right. Sorry. So leaving the 2023 vacant.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Oh, I didn't even see that.
Does the maker agree to that?
Does the maker agree to that?
Oh, yeah.
Second agrees.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. Our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Do you have your gavel, can you bring it?
In the drawer.
I'm gonna go vote now.